Morning, ladies and gentlemen. Let's start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I'd like to introduce students to the United States of America and to the reclusive promotion stands, one nation of hundred dollars, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can have the clerk call their role, please.
Commissioner Leo Molitor.
Present.
Commissioner Nora Dukas.
Here.
Chair Richard Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Michael Westner.
Present.
Okay, we have a forum. This is a time on the agenda when we hear public comments on any items not on the agenda. I have two speaker cards, however, both of them are agenda items. Is there anybody else? Okay. Okay, the first item on the agenda is number five, CUP 5319. Robert Medrano, Peach Hill Soils, the applicant. Staff presentation by Becky Linder.
Good morning, Chairman Rodriguez, Commissioners and County Council. I'm Becky Linder, representing the Ventura County Planning Department for a conditional use permit number 5319. The applicant is Robert Medrano, the owner of Peach Hill Soils, and the property owner is Constantino Novale. The request... The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to legalize an existing large-scale organics processing operation, soil amendment, operation firewood operation, and chipping and grinding operation, which is consistent with the sections 8105-4 for the Use Matrix and 8107-36.4.4, organics processing large-scale special requirements of the Ventura County Noncoastal Zoning Ordinance. The subject site... Yeah, this is not... What happened? Just a minute, it's not my project.
Yeah, right.
If you want, I could just continue without the slides or...
Yeah, go ahead if you would.
Go ahead, okay. The subject property is comprised of three assessor parcels. When combined, consists of one legal lot for a combined total of 89.21 acres. However, the CUP boundary includes only two of the three assessor parcels, which you can see on Exhibit 2, assessor parcel map of your staff report, and then the remainder of the parcel areas are undeveloped. The project site is located within the unincorporated area of the county, west of the city of Moore Park, directly north of State Route 118, and is bisected by the Union Pacific Railroad at the southerly end of the property and is located at 1075 Los Angeles Avenue, Moore Park. And then you can look at your Exhibit 3 for the location map. We had slides for that, but... And... The general plan designates the site and the surrounding areas agriculture, and the site, under the general plan policy 3.2.2.3, requires that agricultural land be utilized for the production of food, fiber, and ornamentals, animal husbandry and care, and uses which are accessory to agriculture, and limited temporary or public uses, which are consistent with agriculture or agricultural-related uses. A review of the general plan policies was conducted, and the project is consistent with all applicable policies, general plan. There's the assessor parcel map, the location map, and here's the general plan map. Moving on to zoning, all parcels subject to the proposed use are zoned AE, agricultural exclusive, 10-acre minimum. This zone conditionally permits a large-scale organics processing, soil amendment, and firewood operation with a planning commission-approved conditional use permit. The next slide shows the aerial photo with the site plan overlay on it. Just a brief history of the site. Back in 2002, the county initiated a zoning violation on the property for the illegal use of several contractors' service and storage yards, which were not permitted in the agricultural zone, AE zone, and the operation of organics processing, chipping and grinding in the AE zone without planning commission-approved permit and other violations. During that time, they came in and submitted application for a conditional use permit, but because that permit was incomplete for a very long time, the county returned the permit and terminated processing, and then it was turned back over to enforcement. Since that time, since the termination of that CUP, which was CUP 5268, all the uses, the illegal uses have ceased, and the items that I discussed above that were in violation have been removed from the site, and the composting operation has ceased also. In 2003, the applicant, Robert Medrano, applied for a new CUP, the one we're processing now, 5319, to legalize the large-scale organics processing, soil amendment, and firewood operation. I'd like to go into more description of the project. As you know, CUP 5319 is requesting to legalize the organic processing operation, and there are no retail sales of organic material or firewood at the site. There's a minimum of four employees for the proposed project, two as drivers and two as equipment operators, working one shift. The organics processing operation yard hours are 9:30 a.m. through 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and Saturday, 7:00 a.m., between 7:00 a.m. and 12:30, and then the facility is closed on Sunday. And this is due to traffic impacts along 118. The proposed project also includes one fueling and maintenance pad, an 800-square-foot storage building, four barns of 400 square feet, and one barn of 2,100 square feet, a lockable 8-by-8-foot metal storage container, two lockable 8-foot-by-35-foot metal storage containers to store tools, batteries, small parts, and supplies, two 500-gallon water tanks, and one 18,000-gallon water tank for fire prevention, and a 1,500-gallon water truck for dust control, and then a storage area for 11 roll-off bins, which are used to transport materials from the project. And here's some drawings of the 800-square-foot storage building. The metal barn, the 2130-square-foot metal barn, has a breezeway between 400-square-foot railcar barn and the 1,200-square-foot railcar barn. This one has a breezeway between it. And then there's the site plan. Did you want me to go into the details about composting and how they do their business?
Perhaps the applicant can give us a little detail on that one here she comes up.
Okay, okay. I'll just talk a little bit about the traffic impacts or the traffic. The project will generate a total of 88 one-way trips between, including employees, to avoid significant peak hour impacts to State Route 118 between Santa Clara and Moore Park city limits. The applicant has also indicated that his project description, in his project description, that truck trips on State Route 118 will only occur between the hours of 9:30 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. For composting and soil amendment, employees will arrive between 5:30 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. Monday through Friday, and materials will be delivered to the project, delivered to the project will be by appointment only, majority of which will involve commercial gardeners and landscapers. And most of the outgoing volume of composting and soil amendment will be delivered using the applicant's own trucks, own vehicles. And materials delivered from the site will be delivered to wholesale growers and nurseries. The proposed project meets the standards specified in Section 8111-1.2.1.1 and 1.2.1.2 of the Ventura County Noncoastal Zoning Ordinance. Supporting evidence and proposed findings are provided for you in the staff report in Section B. I won't read them. The Planning Division reviewed the project to determine if the project had a potential to cause a significant effect on the environment, and after this review, staff determined that a mitigated negative declaration was the appropriate document for this, environmental document for this project, which is Exhibit 11 of your staff report. One mitigation measure was found needed for noise, and a condition was written for the mitigation measures in your conditions. And all property owners within 300 feet of the exterior boundary of the proposed site were notified by U.S. Mail of the proposed project, and in addition, it was also noticed in the local, published in the local newspapers, and as of today, no comments were received regarding that. The project was distributed to the city of Moore Park, and no comments were received from the city of Moore Park. And with that, I'd like to read the final actions, the recommended actions. The recommended actions are, one, find that the project has the potential to cause significant effects on the environment, but revisions in the project plan or proposals made by or agreed to by the applicant would avoid the effects or mitigate the effects to a point where clearly no significant effect on the environment would occur, and there is no substantial evidence in the light of the whole record before the county that the project may have a significant effect on the environment, and certify that your commission has read and considered the information contained in the mitigated negative declaration, and that it reflects the independent judgment of the county, and approve the attached mitigated negative declaration, Exhibit 11, and find, based on the evidence presented in the staff report and at the hearing, that the permit standards of the Ventura County Noncoastal Zoning Ordinance, Sections 8105-4 Use Matrix, 8107-36.4.4, organics processing operations large-scale special requirements, and 8111-1.2.1.1, permit approval standards are met, and adopt a resolution adopting the proposed findings, Section B, and approving conditional use permit number CUP 5319, subject to the attached conditions, Exhibit 10, including the mitigated monitoring program mitigation measure for noise, and specify the Secretary of the Planning Commission at 800 South Victoria Avenue, Ventura, as the custodian and location of the record of proceedings upon which these decisions are based. That concludes my presentation. The applicant and his representative, Lou Mazzario, are here to answer any questions. Are there any questions of staff?
Mr. Molitor.
Thank you, Becky. I had a couple of questions. One of them has to do with water uses. On page 84 of the report, it states that they'll be using 4,500 gallons of water a day. And then on page 83...
84, which?
Oh, page 84, it's the under quantity of water.
Okay.
About the third sentence. Ventura County Water Works is considered to have the ability to provide a permanent supply of domestic water through a combination of groundwater and imported water sources. Now, on the previous page, on the bottom, under water supply, it states the proposed project will not require a supply of domestic water. What am I missing here?
Okay, hold on.
This is the bottom, and Item 23 on page 83 says the project will not supply, require a supply of domestic water, and 84, it said they'll need 4,500 gallons a day.
I believe that is agricultural water. It's groundwater. Can Lou answer, or does he need to wait?
It's up to the chair. Yeah, go ahead and give us, if you can provide information on this.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Chairman, members of the Commission, County Council staff. My name is Lou Mazzario. I work with West Coast Environmental Engineering, and we prepared the application and all the studies for this. I believe the first point of the MND there speaks to, does a project need domestic water supply for restrooms and that sort of thing? In this instance, it doesn't, because there's going to be porta-potties out there. The source of water for the operation will be coming from a domestic water provider. So it's a fine point, I realize, but that's, I think that's the point of confusion. It's the same term, but it falls in two different categories. The operation will be deriving water from a utility, but it doesn't require domestic water for its personnel onsite, because it won't have restrooms and that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty fine point, I realize.
Thank you. Thank you. On page 84 and 85, too, they talk about sewage disposal system. It says that the degree, on top of 85, the degree to be effective, I don't know, anyway, it's less than significant. 84, this project will not require the use of an onsite sewage disposal system, therefore the project will have no impacts. Tell me how that works.
Because they're not going to have an office, they will have porta-potties, one porta-potty onsite for the four employees.
Okay.
But a sewage disposal system would, I believe they would be referring to a sewer or a septic system, an individual septic system that goes into the ground right there on the property.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is on page 73. It has to do with the disposal of hazardous waste. 73, on, under Item B, water, the last paragraph about the Environmental Health Division, that project is considered to be a producer of hazardous waste, but the impacts will be less than significant. And then on page 78 and 79, it goes on to say, "It could result in the creation of adverse impacts to public health," and on Item C, hazardous waste, is, the project is considered to be a producer of hazardous waste, but improper in storage and so forth. How are they going to dispose of hazardous waste?
Yeah, Lou can help me, but I also, is this related to oil?
Yeah, right.
The oil changing or grease for the equipment onsite, which I believe they have somebody come onsite? A company comes onsite to service the trucks, and then they take the oil and the oil waste out off the property and dispose of them properly through the companies that, you know, accept that and dispose of it through state regulations. So they don't... Go ahead, they don't, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Molitor. We took a page out of the surface mining projects that we've worked on, and we worked with Lowell Preston when he was here in his group, to take that fuel, fueling and maintenance pad concept and bring it to this project here, so that as vehicles are fueled, serviced, greased, oils changed, it's all done atop that pad, so if there is a spill or something, it's easier to clean up, and stored in drums onsite, on that pad, in secondary containment. Now, what happens is, the state of California under Prop 65 has a lot of chemicals and other materials they classify as hazardous waste once they've been used, and so it has to go out under manifest. Either the operator himself takes it to a proper disposal site, or you hire somebody like Black Gold or somebody to come in and get it. That's what this is all about. It has to do with that.
So there is hazardous waste that is produced by the process of producing the pulp and the compost?
No, this is strictly related to the vehicles and the servicing of vehicles. I mean, Jiffy Lube produces hazardous waste, just simply by changing oil.
Okay, thank you.
You're talking about the maintenance of the operational?
Yes.
Items?
Yes.
How you trucks or machines?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner do this.
I'd like response from staff. I had a, I had a number of questions. Can you go back with the exhibits? There's one section where I wanted to know what the adjacent use was.
This one?
A little more. There, at the top of the slide, what are the small lots on?
Let me look at my map. It's too far away. I believe those are city of Moore Park.
Are there homes there?
Yep. They said, yes, there would be homes there.
How far away are the operations from those homes?
Hold on one second.
You know?
Do you have the aerial photo?
Commissioner Dukas, if I may, the operations itself to the northernmost part of the property, and I think you have to address the matter of scale, and you're packing on page 19. You have, make sure the five, at the bottom, it shows the scale, 3,500 feet and seven...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the beginning of that. Can you hold on just a minute, please? Who's the planner for this project?
I am.
Okay. I think this is the appropriate time for staff response.
Okay, sure, sure, no problem. No problem.
So I'd like to know how far away operations is from those homes?
Well, to the end of the project boundary, operations are... It would be quite a distance.
Is it a mile away?
What?
Is it a mile away?
It would be more than 500 feet away. It would be probably...
Well, a mile is considerably more than 500 feet.
Yeah, it would be at least, I need a scale.
Commissioner Dukas, I think that we need to get you a very specific answer on that question, and the scale on Exhibit 5 is incorrect.
Yeah.
So the scale that I, it's 3,500 feet, which is absolutely incorrect. I think it's 300, right?
Yeah, it's 300 and 600.
So let me scale it out, and we'll get the answer back to you. Okay, that'll, that'll really help. And the reason why I want to know is because of the noise from the tub grinder and the change to the condition regarding the mitigation measure for noise. So that's why I want to know how far away operations are, that grinder are, from those homes there.
Okay.
So, to the issue of noise, which is it? Are they going to do a blanket on the grinder, or are they going to use a sound blanket somewhere? And where is it going to be?
They're going to put, they get, they can choose either one, the mobile acoustic curtain system, or the industrial sound blanket.
Where has the effectiveness of that been analyzed? I didn't see it in here.
It was in the noise study that was done.
Have you ever heard these things?
I have, actually.
Yeah, they're loud.
They're pretty loud, but...
They're pretty loud.
They can be muffled. I have another composting operation that I did a permit for on Arnold Road, and they, you know, were able to successfully mitigate their noise.
Uh-huh. With, did they use a blanket, or a, did they wrap it, or did they have the?
They... The sound curtains.
Curtain, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm not going on a smart blanket.
One is mobile with the equipment, it moves with it, and then the other one is attached to it and surrounds it, and it stays stationary with the equipment where it is. But because of the distance from where the location of the grinding is to the nearest house, it's out, it's within significant distance, that once you put that sound barrier on it, it's supposed to reduce it to below the county thresholds for noise, and then if, when we go out and we inspect and we, I'm going to take a noise consultant with me to measure the noise with a noise meter at the two various houses on either side, then if it's not, then we were thinking that what we would do is have them do both, and that should surely mitigate it. But actually, when they were in violation, they were composting, we didn't receive any noise complaints, but this was just found through noise levels that were done with the manufacturer and the estimated noise, and then the noise report was prepared through an actual tub grinder at a different location, so...
It's been my experience that not everyone knows where to complain.
Yeah, that could be.
So, you know...
Well, they did call me during the MND process, the neighbors, but noise was never one of their complaints.
Okay, well, that caught my attention, and so I wanted to assure that mitigation for noise was better.
Excuse me, Commissioner Dukas, may I ask a question about that noise while you're on it?
Sure.
Thank you. The operations can start at 5:30 in the morning. Am I to assume that they could turn those grinders on at 5:30 in the morning?
No.
Is there a time that the grinders can be on?
9:30, because the employees can arrive between 5:30 and 6:00, but the actual grinding... the actual grinding, um, operations doesn't, tracking and all that doesn't begin until nine-thirty.
Thank you, Commissioner Dukas.
And, and, okay, let's go, let's go with hours again. When do customers come, to come pick up?
Customers can come also between nine-thirty AM and three PM, Monday through Friday.
Nine-thirty AM to three PM?
PM, Monday through Friday.
Uh-huh.
And Saturday, seven AM between, and seven AM and twelve-thirty.
And twelve-thirty?
PM.
Okay. Um, and, and what they, what would they be picking up?
They would be picking up soil amendment?
And?
And fire, and/or firewood, mulch, that kind of thing.
What, what else with that kind of thing per their permit?
Um, they produce compost, mulch, wood chips, similar products to that. It's for landscape trimmings, and firewood.
Anything else?
Not that I know of.
Is there anything else that's prohibited, or is this the kind of permit where they can only have the things that are listed in the permit? Or is it, I mean, is it prescriptive, or?
I believe it's, it's only including what's listed here.
Uh-huh. And, uh, so, is it, is it considered retail, or is it?
No, it's considered wholesale. I was, you know, way everything was described to me in the project description, that everything was wholesale, there wasn't...
Everything was wholesale. Okay.
Uh-huh.
Um, how long, how long did it operate without, you know, coming through the process?
Without, yeah. Uh, let's see. In two thousand and two, um, they operated, and then, um, they shut, they were shut down, I want to say, two thousand and seven?
What precipitated this shutdown?
What precipitated it?
Yeah, what, I mean, was it in response to a complaint? Well, did someone complain?
No. Well, um, just mostly the violation, you know, because they're in violation, and we wanted to treat all, all of the businesses that were in violation equally.
How did we become aware of the violation?
Uh, through the zoning enforcement officer.
Do, do they respond on a complaint basis?
They do.
Okay.
Yeah, so yes, there, there was a complaint.
Thank you. Why is the permit period for a ten-year chunk of time instead of something shorter?
No reason in particular, it's just we normally...
Do, do other, do, do the other providers of this kind of material, do they also have tenure permits?
Ten years, I believe so. I believe that's what we're, we're giving them unless there's special circumstances that would shorten the period of time.
Uh-huh. Is there any kind of monitoring, regular monitoring? You had mentioned that you're going to go back and make sure that that...
Do the tub grinder...
The blanket and the curtain are going to be, yeah.
And then, um, after that, we have enforcement, condition compliance staff that go out every three years, um, to, to conditional use permits, and...
Okay. Um, moving on to another, um, subject, odor. Are there standards for tolerable odor?
Uh, I don't, I believe there's, you know, odor, environmental health has odor impact plant, you know, programs.
Yeah, how's it, how is that evaluated, and how are standards set? I mean, it's really hard.
It is subjective.
It's really hard.
Um, and odor. I would have to look at their condition. Let's see. Um, well, they have submitted of the LEA odor impact minimization plan, and that is all done through composting also, and the turning of the material, and removing it off-site within seventy-two hours, so that it doesn't stay on-site and create these odor nuisances. That's part of their plan. And then, um, they will submit their plan, and then that's how they are to operate, and...
But sometimes it's not feasible to get it moved?
Off-site.
Off-site, seventy-two hours, you know, just the practicality of this kind of operation, you know, weather, there's all kinds of things that interfere with that seventy-two hour time period. How will they deal with it? You know, if, say, it's too windy, or rain, you know, there's, there's things that interfere with the, with the operation of something like this. How, how will they deal with the smell?
Well, I know that one way is, you know, through the turning of the piles, keeps it aerated, and that's one of the keys, is keeping it aerated, because when it's stagnant, then, then the heat builds up, and then the odors are produced, so... But to be more specific than that, in operations, on composting, probably...
Okay, so there's nothing beyond just, just turning it and making sure that it's promptly moved?
Yeah, it can be moved, they can turn it and move it to, like, adjacent to it, with the pile, like, in another row. But other than that, they don't plan, I mean, they could tarp it even possibly.
Uh-huh.
Maybe through the rain, in the rainy times, they could tarp it. Keep it dry.
Um, I'm just moving through the staff report. Was, uh, what's the purpose of the setback on page thirty-six? Got a three-hundred-foot setback, hundred-foot, is that, uh... Is, what's that setback for? Is it for, just so people don't see it, for the noise? Odors, dust?
Yeah, um, and that was in...
Would a fence help?
A fence?
Yeah.
Like, what kind of fence do you mean?
I'm not sure what the setbacks are for, so I'm not sure if a chain link fence would...
The setbacks are for any off-site residence or public facility, and those are for, well, obviously for odor, but also for dust control, um, and that kind of thing, just in general nuisance. Three hundred feet is the minimum.
Is there any, was there any consideration of foreign seeds? And, and what foreign seeds and what their impact would be, you know, if they were blown to the adjacent agricultural area?
Like grass seeds or something?
Yeah.
Well, I believe, I don't, I don't believe that seeds would go, go flying, because they have a misting system that they, and they water the piles and while it's grinding, so it, there shouldn't be seeds flying off of the grinding and sorting conveyor belts. Because that's also part of the dust control plan, so that shouldn't happen.
Okay. Um, during the period of time that they were in operations, were, were there ever any fires?
During the time when they're in operation without a permit, there was a brush fire, a forest fire up there.
No, 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 no. Were there any fires associated with it?
On the site.
Yeah, because, um...
Like self-induced fires?
Yeah.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Um, how big are these, are these big?
The windrows?
Yeah, I'm thinking piles.
Um, let me...
I couldn't make the math work out, so, um, help me.
Okay. I'll get it.
It's on page forty-eight.
I just want to do something.
No, I don't remember that. I read this a couple of weeks ago, but I was confused, because there was one place where it said that it was going to be no more than, I want to say a thousand, but then I multiplied that out, and it was sixteen hundred or something. So I just want to chase that down.
Um, for fire department regulations, the windrows cannot exceed a hundred and fifty feet in length, and they're to be separated by a twenty-foot fire access road. Twenty feet so would be maintained between the piles and the windrows, or twelve feet shall be maintained between all piles and windrows, alternating with a twenty-foot fire access.
So that's, that's, I can read that.
Yeah.
Is that, is that a fire department?
Requirement, yes.
That's just for fire department, for their access to go through? There isn't something that, there's only a certain mass?
Well...
Of, of material that can occupy that area? Does it say someplace a thousand?
A thousand feet long? Is that what you mean?
Thousand cubic yards per pile?
Oh, you mean per windrow?
Yeah.
A thousand cubic yards per windrow? Let me check the project description.
There were just two numbers that didn't shake hands, and now I can't find it.
Um...
But, um...
I don't know.
And, and there was another one recently, it didn't come to the planning commission, I think it went to the planning director, an eco...
Ecologics.
That, that, I think was conditioned to just have a thousand cubic yards. Why is this one allowed sixteen hundred cubic yards? And is, what's the rational basis for the limitation?
It was due to the circumstances. In the ecologics case, it was the circumstances and the location and the application that we decided a thousand cubic yards was what that applicant could have in that location, so this is a...
So my, so my, my question is, I know. Is it, is the reason for safety, is it for access? Is it, you know, some kind of critical mass that happens when it? I, it just, it caught my eye that, that one was half again as big per windrow as, as this other one, and I just wondered what the purpose of the limitation was.
Well, partly it would be because, would be the amount of acreage on the site, how much room they have, and this is a large site, I don't know how big ecologics are.
Okay, so there's nothing, there's nothing about it, it creating more smell, or it creating more of a danger of, of sub-ignition?
There's, and then also in practicality, because they have to get the skip loader and turn it, so you can only have it so high. I mean, there is a math to it, you know, you can't just have these giant piles, of course, they, you know, it, there's a math to composting and science behind it, to make it feasible to turn the piles and to compost it at the proper temperature, you have, you have to have it a certain size. And then the length just depends on how much room and what's appropriate for the site.
Okay, that really, that really clears up the confusion I had in my mind, why, why there was the difference between these two very similar operations. If it's, if it's for that reason, I can understand it. That's all of the questions I have for staff right now.
Commissioner Dukas, I wanted to get back with you with the two outstanding questions. One of them was the issue on, on the setbacks. You asked why those setbacks were in there. They're actually in the code, and they're in the ordinance, and they're part of the standards that are applied to all of these type of operations, so that's directly from the code. The second question was, how far is this, is the nearest house a noise-sensitive receptor? And there was a, a noise study that was prepared on June twenty-fifth, two thousand and four, that gave that specific number at seven hundred and fifty feet from the source. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Commissioner Lisa, no questions. Okay, at this time, disclosures.
You have to say that.
Disclosure. Uh, I, I think I've got to read something here.
No, I have nothing to disclose. You go ahead, you want to read that first?
Right. Um, at this time, I'd like to ask each planning commissioner to state for the record, on the record, whether or not he or she has received any oral, written, or expert communication regarding this, this agenda item. It is not already contained in the records before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information, only if that information is not contained in the, in the record before us on this matter. Commissioner?
I have no disclosures.
None?
Um, I have not received any expert communications, however, living where I live, I drive by this facility, if not on a weekly, daily basis, so I'm aware of it, I've seen it, I know the topography, where the houses are, those things, so, but that's just the, the nature of driving on eighteen, that's all I have.
And I have driven past that location on one eighteen many times, not realizing that Okay, at this time, uh, we'll open the public hearing. We have a presentation by the applicant. Excuse me. I have three speaker cards, and we'll, I'll call these after the presentation here.
Good morning again, commissioners, I'm Lou Merzario. Sorry for the lapse in protocol there. One matter I did want to correct for you, which may have contributed to some understanding about how big things were on the site. On, in your staff report on page nineteen, you have an exhibit five, which is the site plan, and on the plane down here, I, I gasped when I saw the scale at the bottom of the page, saying thirty-five hundred feet and seven thousand feet, it should be three hundred and six hundred, and we will provide replacements of that later today. So I think that'll make you, I mean, it's, it's a big piece of property, but it's really not that big.
Yeah, you know, I really regret not going out there.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's so helpful to just visit a site, and when you're, when you're just given the stuff on paper, and that's, and that's my fault. Usually I do that, but I didn't get a chance to do it this time. I thought, what?
And I think if I just made a correction, again, you're right, because when you're asking about houses because of the elevations that are right behind the property, where they're at, it's so, yeah, you're right. Two-dimensional does not describe the property and the impact.
Exactly. Right. Exactly. So that might, I'd like to speak to a few of the points that you made, Commissioner Dukas, and that is pertaining to noise. We prepared the noise study for this project, and as per county requirements, we went out and essentially identified the line that would be the significant thresholds line, and, oh, I'm sorry, we lost our map, but it, the significance threshold line is substantially below the top of the property and well beyond the project boundary, but did, but did include the home to the west.
Excuse me. Can we get the, the parcel maps backed up?
Yeah. Yes, this one there.
Thank you.
So if you were to come down on that uppermost parcel, about a third of the distance, that's as, that's as far as the significance line went.
Could you use the little red pointer thing?
Um, is this the red pointer thing?
I, I'm sure it has a better name than that.
All right. Let me actually...
Thingy. I've been advised.
The red thingy? Is that what you call it? Let me get the noise study here, hang on. It's right here. See if I can illustrate this. With a steady hand. The northernmost limit is about there, and there is a home right there, which is included in the significance threshold, and the other extent of it is over, over there, and it just goes across the line right there, and there weren't any residences there. The, the threshold was exceeded by just under three decibels, and with regard to the mitigation, the type of mitigation being brought forward is a discretionary one, because it really matters how Mr. Medrono proceeds with his operation. If he finds it's useful to keep his tub grinder relatively stationary, and he chooses to bring the material to the grinder, then stationary curtains around it are probably the most cost-effective way to do it. If he finds he needs to move it around frequently, then you need to wrap the tub itself with blankets, and sometimes they actually even hang them off of it like a curtain.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've seen other places.
Right.
And, and both sounded good.
Yes. And in this particular instance, we made an amendment between hearings here regarding the mitigation, and that was, what came to you originally as a prior to recommendation that there be noise studies done before we started operations, and our thought on that was it wouldn't really, it would be, it would have to be staged, and that wouldn't be in your interest, so we, we asked that it be within the first thirty days of operations, so it allows him to get things set up and give you a real-life demonstration of what's being done. And you have to understand, too, the materials that are, that are coming to this project are largely tree trimmings, shrub trimmings, or lesser, they're not big trees that get ground up into, into chips, although there will be some of that. So, unlike the ones you hear in the forest when they're doing forest thinning, it won't be quite that loud, so we're, we're pretty comfortable with that. On, on the odor issue, there's a requirement for what's called an OIMP, an odor impact minimization plan. Environmental Health administers that, it has to all be done per their protocols, and... Environmental Health administers that, it has to all be done per their protocols and, and Mr. Medrano will be working that through. Just, just to make you briefly familiar of the process, this is an aerobic composting process, which is very different than anaerobic, so you don't get that sewer kind of smell. And it's very temperature controlled. This is, it, what's called operated at the thermophilic range, which is the higher end, which is designed to assist in composting. And part of the work that's done early in the mornings and throughout the day by the operators is they go through these long temperature probes and they probe into the piles to determine where the temperatures are. And when they get to certain points, they, they turn the piles. And that helps assist two things, it aerates the piles and it keeps the temperature within the ranges that are desired. And it gives them an opportunity to add water to them to keep moisture content where they want it to be. In terms of the seventy-two hour requirement, again, that is a, that requirement is that from the point in time that material was brought on site to the point in time it's ground, and that's on page three of your staff report. And, and that's usually pretty easy to, to observe, they bring it in, you grind it up and it's done. And more importantly, the types, again, the types of materials that could be brought to the site that could cause odor issues would be things like grass clippings and that sort of thing. And Mr. Medrano, that'll only be incidental, it might be mixed in incidentally, he won't be accepting large quantities of that because that can become problematic. Grass clippings, as you know, can get to be pretty nasty and they smell, so. Yet a question about seeds. Again, given the nature of the material that comes to the site, there won't be a lot of that. However, there is a provision on the firewood operation side of this to make sure that materials coming to the site, I believe are south of Monterey in their source. And the reason is that north of, north of Monterey, there is a, a particular virus or fungus that causes what's called sudden oak death. And so there's a prohibition on importation of materials from that area. The pile size, I think everybody understands now why that worked, but as important, which speaks to the volume that can be on the side. Fire, the fire department, not only are they interested in such matters as maximum height and length, but they're interested in space between them so they can get their equipment in there. Because you can imagine, were a fire to start there, it's very difficult to put out. Speaking to that matter, and this comes directly from that experience we all had when I lived here as well, when the composting operation now where the harbor caught fire, there was not enough water in the world to put that out. And the reason was the piles were very big and they, as you remember, had to spread them everywhere. This project has a requirement that regardless of what's on site, you must still have the ability to knock everything down to two feet so they can put it out. And these are all fire department requirements. And there is some, there is some sense of confusion when you read the two conditions about size, compost piles and windrow piles. Compost piles are finished products, and I wish we asked that, be put in parentheses, whereas the windrow piles are processing piles. So once they're, once they're composted, it's a different, a different regime, they're not as active. Other than that, I don't have any, any information to offer unless you have further questions.
Questions?
Just one that I always ask, are there any conditions that are being proposed here that you have any difficulty with? Or is your applicant willing to accept them as presented?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mr. Medrano is here to answer any questions, speak to his project.
Okay, I have a question before you leave. And it has to do with, I guess with the odor issue.
Yes.
Given the direction of the general prevailing winds, I mean, I've, I've been, you know, in the area for a long time, I've worked out there for three or four years in City Moore Park, three years anyway. And I certainly played golf at, at the golf course up on the hill there. The prevailing winds generally are from the west. I'm, I'm, I've still got a question about the odor issue. I, and the, the, my recollection is that the city of Oxnard, I believe, had a problem a couple of years ago.
You did.
On the opposite side of the river. And ultimately, the source was discovered to be a chipping operation, I believe, on the Ventura side of the river. I mean, how was that resolved and how are we looking at that potential mitigation?
Yeah, that, I was, I was a beneficiary of that too. I lived in the harbor and when the wind blew that way, it was, we had, we called it surround smells. We either got the sewer plants or that, or the squid nets. But that, that operation was, had a lot of issues. They had a lot of different types of materials there. And as I recall, it was a matter of not having enough operating space to turn the piles properly. They, they went off in an anaerobic fashion as opposed to an aerobic fashion. And, and I, I think the county, I will, if I can speak for you, learned a lot about that, not from, only from a planning standpoint, from an environmental health standpoint. And that's why we're all standing here with all kinds of plans and studies going forward so that that doesn't happen again. That was an interesting lesson for everyone.
This is a wholesale operation?
Yes.
There's no retail?
Yes, there's none.
And tell me again what the, what the materials are that-
Well, they range all the way from firewood to chipped materials to compost, organic type compost, perhaps, you garden, it's the sort of stuff that comes in bags, you buy it in the bag, but it's just, this isn't a bigger pile. Soil amendments that you rotaseal into your garden.
How about sand?
I, you're not doing sand, are you? Yes, yes. I think Mr. Medrano wants to speak to that. I believe he does import and mix some of that material with his, with his stuff, so he may want to speak to that directly.
Okay, is, is, I'm going to follow up with staff then. Is, is sand part of the thing that, that he's permitted now?
Do you want to have him answer and then we come up, or do you want me to? Why don't you go ahead and respond to our question first?
I believe that sand is in his project description as the materials that he, okay, the soil amendment operation would develop soil amendments for resale by blending sandy loam, sand and horse manure with fine grained compost.
Okay, but is he going to sell sand?
I don't believe so, but I'll, it doesn't, I don't have that as being a product. It's one of the mixtures in there to produce his soil amendment.
Okay, let's-
And-
Maybe it's more appropriate we have the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay, if you'll state your name and, and address of the record, please.
Okay, good morning, Planning Director Rodriguez, Commissioners and County Council. My name is Robert Medrano, the applicant. I live at forty-two, forty-three Hitch Boulevard in Moore Park. And the question was regarding sand. We do have sand on the property for some of our soil blends. And if the order would come in for pure sand, we do deliver pure sand. Lot of the sand is generated on site from some of the runoff, the erosion. We'll then screen it and add it to some of our amendments.
What else besides sand?
We have some rock on site, some gravel for our road maintenance. We also have a stockpile of asphalt chips for road maintenance and any erosion issues.
Anything else?
We have some boulders on site, the firewood, as we mentioned, and I believe that's it.
Railroad ties?
Not at this time.
Did you before?
Earlier in the years, we did. At our previous site in Moore Park, we had an existing stockpile of ties that we moved over to that property.
Okay, do you, do you agree with these hours of operation, nine-thirty AM to three PM?
I do.
Okay, because I see on your business hours, it says seven AM to four PM?
Yes, ma'am. We've been sending out correspondence, email and faxes to everyone to let them know if, if approved, these would be the hours. We also have two gates in front of the property that we would keep locked.
And could you explain a little bit more about wholesale and retail?
Yes, ma'am. Some, most of our orders come in over the telephone, landscape contractors, park districts, things of that nature. Then we load the material in our trucks and deliver it to the site. We do get incidental customers coming in, people inquiring about amendments and topsoils and things like that. What we're proposing to do is open another site where we can send a retail business to. Or for instance, rental yards are interested in stockpiling some of our materials and we can direct the retail business to them.
So, so you agree with omitting the retail sale portion of the business?
Yes, ma'am, I just believe that-
Okay, I just want to, I want to make sure that it's all understood.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a question as part of that, a trailer to that question on retail wholesale. Your answers basically have said that you truck away or haul away, out whatever the product is that's been ordered. Is there any pickup on site by a, by a customer?
Yes, sir. Some of the landscapers will bring in their green waste or their tree clippings. And in some instances, they'll like, they'll take some finished product back with them. So they'll dump a trailer of green waste and then we'll reload a, a yard or two of finished product.
Landscapers, landscaping generally tends to be smaller vehicles.
Yes, sir.
As part of that wholesale operation, is that going to, that extension of removing product in a trailer, box trailer or truck, I presume, is that going to be available to the general public? Not necessarily landscapers, you mentioned questionnaires about topsoil and conditioning and that type of stuff, inquiries you've had in the past. And I, and I ask that because local compost plant, mushroom plant here in Ventura, obviously had a major compost and still does operation. And while that was a secondary, that was secondary to mushroom, mushroom production, they did have an operation where they sold the product, the mulch, mulch product, both in bulk and in sack, as I recall. So if I were to come and call, or someone's to call you and say, come in with a trailer, I could or could not pick up mulch from you on the weekend, on a Saturday morning?
If it's a homeowner asking for a small amount of material, again, we either direct them to a rental yard that might stockpile our material. There is a nursery in Somas that stockpile, stockpiles our material and we would direct them there. Occasionally, we do get a homeowner coming in on a Saturday just to do a backyard project. And again, we'll either direct them to another site. The biggest issue is the traffic and also the railroad. I don't think the property that we're on here, that we're discussing is appropriate for retail.
Okay, thank you. The, oh, I know what it was I was asking. Do you do any bagging, packaging, production on prem as part of your wholesale operation to load the truck and deliver it?
It's all in bulk.
It's all bulk?
Yes.
Okay, so no bagging?
By the truck.
No bagging operation, packaging operation there?
I know.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I have three speaker cards. Mr. Medrano, you just, you fill this out.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Lou Medrano has a speaker card for him?
Sorry, not me.
Okay. And I have a speaker card from Sonia Flores. Present, not present?
Is she just in the lobby?
I think she was here on the next side of the building.
Oh, oopsie.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here, well, it doesn't say, yeah, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Linder, if I could, because of the, the history of this project, I wanted to just make real clear what was allowed and what wasn't. And he said that he agrees that it's wholesale, not retail, and that he doesn't stock railroad ties, but there are these soils, sand, mulch, rock, bark, boulders and firewood. And, and is that everything that's allowed? And is it one of those things where you have to say what he is allowed? Or, you know the difference?
Yes, I know.
I'm trying to say, is it, is it prescriptive?
Something that's incidental, that is not in here, that you're concerned with, that-
I just want to make sure that what he's permitted for is what he's actually doing and that it meshes up.
Correct. What he's permitted for is what we've discussed here today and in the staff report and in the conditions and nothing more that I know of.
Okay, it, it did, could you direct me to the page in the staff report where it says what, what he's actually allowed to have there in his wholesale operation?
Okay, one, one thing, on the first page, there's four definitions of what organics processing operation, soil amendment operation, firewood and chipping and grinding. So all of the types of materials and products that are listed in there-
But I'm, I'm talking about the things that he sold before, the rock and the soil, the boulders.
Well, the only thing I don't have in here is boulders. I don't have that.
Would that mean that he can't sell his boulders anymore? If it's not in there?
I don't have to ask the planning director, can he sell boulders or?
We could probably fit that in. I mean, the, the definitions as they're listed say, not including or not limited to. So I mean, I would think that, that the sale of, of rocks and boulders from the site would also be acceptable, but we can outline that specifically in the conditions and- I'm just, I'm just looking at a page from their website on what they, what they offer, what their hours are. It says, it, it, it lists all the things. There is a little difference between whether it's wholesale and retail, we got that sorted out. There was a little difference on the business hours, that's sorted out. And I just want to make sure that, that we're permitting what it is that he's actually doing and that it shakes hands. So is, can we add boulders if that's what he's doing?
Yes.
Okay.
We can add boulders, yes. Would you like to add boulders and what was the other thing? Sand?
You want to ask him if there's anything else?
No, no, but I would like to, I think what we're trying to, but, yeah, let's allow incidental landscaping materials, so it's, gets a little more discretionary.
Thank you, counselor.
You're welcome.
All right.
So, you know, when we get to that point, we'll include incidental landscaping materials.
Okay, all right.
That will be an amendment then of condition one A.
One A?
One A.
All right.
Chair Rodriguez. Chair, through, through the chair, I, I think I heard Commissioner Dukas say that she had reviewed the website for the applicant.
Yes.
Could you make a fuller disclosure with regards to your investigation of materials outside of the, the record? Because I don't see in the record before us, website materials and things of that nature. So if you could be a little more explicit about what you're, what you're referring to and the information that you're gathering to bring to this question of this additional condition then.
Commissioner Dukas?
Okay, I didn't know, I didn't know that I had to disclose that I looked something up on the website.
That, that is something that is why we make that disclosure there about materials not contained in the record before you. And if you're going to rely on that to request a additional condition or to make specific requests of the applicant, then that needs to be disclosed because the applicant has the opportunity to, to say, well, that is correct or not correct, what you saw on the website, or to add additional clarification if necessary.
Couple of weeks ago, I looked up all sorts of things. In the news, there was Ecologics and we had this one coming before us, Peach Hills. They seemed similar to me. So I Google, I Googled Ecologics and read a bunch of stuff on that. And then I Googled Peach Hill soils, they have a website. They say they, materials are available for wholesale and retail sale. It says what they, what they sell and their business hours. And I asked the applicant and, and we're, we're making sure that what, what the website says and what he's permitted for, you know, is, all shakes hands and, and he can do his That's it. Do I need to, I mean, the, the website, how do you get that part of the record?
Can we have the applicant come forward and identify his website?
Right, that would be appropriate, yeah.
Okay, if you would, Mr. Medrano.
Regarding the website, this is something that I've been playing around with for a number of years. I believe it's still listed under construction. If you go to the website, as far as the retail sales or the retail customers, we do have people calling us quite often, homeowners, that will see our trucks in the neighborhood or see the materials on the job site. We've done compost giveaways with the city of Thousand Oaks years ago. And we still get a lot of retail that call us. So rather than losing our customer service, they can call us on the telephone and then we can direct them to places that will either have a compost giveaway sometime down the road or places that stock- have a compost giveaway sometime down the road, or places that stock our material.
Do you want to look at this, uh, it doesn't say under construction, I don't recall it saying under construction, I just thought, ooh, Peach Hills Soil, take a look. Do you want to look at this?
Um, that's okay.
Do you, do you know what I'm talking about, is it?
You know, ma'am, honestly, I don't, I...
Let's, let's, uh...
To be honest with you.
Can we go ahead and enter this, uh, looks like a copy of a page?
Oh, it's got my scribbles over it.
Their homepage?
I'm glad I didn't doodle.
For Peach Hill Soil into the record. And so the address is peachhills soils dot com?
Um, PH soils dot com.
Oh, is this you, is this you, though? It has your address and everything, this is you?
I'm sure it is.
Yeah. Give him a minute.
Yeah, that's us.
So, does your permit match what you want to do?
Um, yeah, I believe it does.
Okay.
I have a couple of trail questions, one that just occurred, I meant to ask earlier. How long was your operation in existence before the citation was issued in, I assume, 2000, or, or you were required to come before the planning commission?
From day one, um, we started a wholesale nursery in 1983 in the city of Moore Park, in the Peach Hill Development, under some Edison power lines that we leased, and that's how we came up with the name, we started in that development, and slowly made the transition from a wholesale nursery to a wholesale soil amendment operation. Um, to answer your question, before the violations, we were then moved to a piece of property, um, again, under the power lines, just on the outskirts of Moore Park, but within the city limits. Um, the city of Moore Park rezoned the property to industrial, which then put us in violation at that time, once the rezoning was, uh, enforced. That's when we moved over to the other piece of property where we're at now. So, before the violations, we were in business a total of about 15 years.
And at the, at the present location?
We've been there about 10 years.
Okay, to date?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you were in operation for about three or four years at that location prior to the issuance or the requirement for...
Correct.
The permit, okay.
And at, at that time, uh, we moved all our trees from one property, we moved all our nursery stock over to the property we're at now.
Okay.
But because of the water situation on the property, um, just the level of competition in the area, like I said, we made that transition over to the landscape materials.
Okay, and on that issue of material, are you mining that location for, for rock? Or how does the rock get there, or the gravel?
Some of the, some of the rock is incidental, that comes in from our, um, topsoil source, we'll then screen it out and stockpile the rock. Some of it is just coming from various job sites around the area that has rock to get rid of.
So, when you refer to boulders, what are you talking about in size?
Um, anywhere from a bowling ball up to three by two, three by three feet in size.
Okay.
And most of that material is used for landscape purposes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
One more question.
Yeah, one little tiny question, you have port-a-potties, what about hand washing facilities?
We have, um, hand sanitizer station, I guess you can call it. Um, we do, or we can, we do have access to, um, other port-a-potties that have been modified to have water tanks and hand washing, um, facilities on them.
So, so you do have those?
No, I can get those. Currently, today, we have hand wipes and hand sanitizers.
Thank you.
Okay, I, uh, I don't have any speakers in opposition, uh, or any presentation opposition. Um, nothing further from applicants? Uh, final comments by staff?
Um, what about those hand washing facilities? And, and does this match the, is what he's doing and what he's wanting to do, does it match the zoning with the, with the incidental landscaping materials? It all, it all, it's all consistent with the zone?
I would think so, but I'd need to look in the ordinance. I would.
Are you, is, the question is, if, if he sells incidental landscape material like sand and, uh, boulders, consistent with the zoning that he's in, yes, the answer is yes.
Yes, okay.
And, and is there something we can do about hand washing?
Um, I was just going to look at the environmental health, um, conditions for, um, sanitary, you know, portable toilet, if you give me a minute. That's condition 23. On page 40, 22, um, adequate quantity of portable toilet shall be provided on-site for personnel and maintained in a sanitary condition.
Can we, can we get the kind that you can wash your hands instead of just having the hand sanitizers?
Sure, I believe so. Can we require that? Okay. So, we can add a planning division condition to that, or just, how do we do that? Add a condition?
Yes, we can add a condition to clarify that. Is that acceptable to the applicant?
He said yes.
Uh, applicant said yes? Okay, thank you.
So, you want, you want to have a, a portable toilet that ha- has a self-contained, uh, hand washing facility, like on the outside, or something like that?
I, I don't know if that's the kind that, I, I think the applicant knows what he's talking about, so, uh, whatever he says he can get with the...
Like a hand washing station?
Yeah, it's, it's an all-in-one, it's not a separate thing, like you go to the carnival and you have your own separate...
Okay, yeah, it's connected to the side.
Something, something like that, where people can wash their hands?
Well, sometimes they're inside, whatever, it doesn't matter, I guess.
I don't care.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, nothing further. Okay, at this time, we'll close the, uh, close the public hearing. And deliberate, uh, to Mr. Weisner.
Um, unless there's any further discussions, I would like to propose a motion, and that motion is to accept, um, the recommended actions on page 12, 1 through 5, with the following additions, that under condition 1A, the applicant be allowed to have incidental landscaping materials, and under, uh, condition number 23, that, uh, additional hand washing facilities will be made available to staff and personnel.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second, and can we add into the record the, uh, website information, and this, is this memorandum part of a, a record, or do we have to...
The, the errata, it's included in...
It's already included.
It's already included, okay, so the only thing is the website.
And, and Chair, um, through the chair, uh, Chair Rodriguez, uh, want to draw your attention to page 29 of your staff report, uh, conditions of approval for the Peach Hill Soils permit. I'm picking up on concerns expressed by Commissioner Dukas with regards to the retail sales at this site. If you look at page 29, uh, the third full paragraph, last sentence?
Which paragraph?
Uh, third full paragraph, page 29.
Okay.
There are no retail sales of organic material or firewood at this facility. I would, uh, suggest or recommend to the board, if you want to make clear that there are no retail sales, that the language be amended as follows, that the words "are no" are removed and replaced with "shall not be any." So, the sentence will read, "There shall not be any retail sales of organic material or firewood at this facility," as opposed to simply a statement of fact, "there are no," that's, that's not regulatory language. So, I just want to pick up on Commissioner Dukas's concerns and put that in there, or suggest that to the, to the commission.
Commissioner Dukas?
Uh, is, is that okay with the applicant, a nod, or a...
Yes, that's good.
Okay, so, um, if the maker of the motion could...
Certainly, for the record, all men, the motion is additionally as follows, to accept the website materials that was presented by Commissioner Dukas and, and recognized by the applicant, and additionally, in condition 1A, to remove the words "no retail sales" and replace it "shall not be retail sales."
That was on condition 29.
1A, page 29.
1A, 29. Okay, we have, for, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any other comments?
Just a comment, uh, I want to compliment Mr. Madrona on his support of, of, uh, of the community and, and his contribution to schools and working with the Boy Scouts, that's commendable. The other is just kind of a general comment. Uh, I'd like the planning department just to consider the idea that, and I'm, I'm not, I don't want to interfere with the 10-year permit on this one, but I, I would like the planning department to consider the idea that if someone willfully disregards the, uh, permit requirement and operates willfully in that matter, that they're not granted a full 10-year, uh, CUP when, when they do apply. That's just a comment, no one has to respond, that's just my personal feeling. But I do support the motions and the second.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries. Uh, moving on to item six, um... Commission, start it. Okay, moving on to item six. Um, LU 5 dash 0113 and, um, LU 08 dash 0010, Limoneira Company applicant, presentation by staff, Mr. Anthony.
Chairman Rodriguez, members of the commission, my name is Chuck Anthony, I'm a planner with Ventura County Planning. Planning has reviewed the Limoneira's company request for a plan development permit for 74-unit farmworker housing complex and variance for five tandem parking spaces. The five, the farmworker units would be built on two sites, the 800 Eliso site, which is on a 219-acre assessor's parcel, and the Olive Land site, which is on a 25-acre assessor's parcel. And... Those would be those two in there. What you're seeing of all these other sites, all these other assessor's parcels are made up, or the assessor's parcel that make up one legal lot, the white area would be the project area, one of the project sites, and the other area, and the other assessor's parcel is the other project site. The 800 site, which is known as the 800 Eliso site, is composed of three different camps. This would be one of the camps. The black squares, whoops, the black squares are, of course, would be the proposed units that would be going in. For the, the 800 site is broken down into three different camps. This first camp is called the 800 camp. As you can see, there would be five units that would infill existing units that have been built there years ago. The site above it here is known as the 800 Camp East, and on that site would be 57 new units that would be built there. There are currently avocado orchards at that site. This is the third camp of the Eliso site, and this is the 800 Camp North, and three units would be proposed in there to infill existing units. I went back one too many. This is the second site, which is on a second, the second assessor's parcel, which is made up of 25 acres, is that there would be seven units, excuse me, nine units that would be going into that site, they're infilling seven existing units. If constructed, the farmworker units would provide housing for approximately 333 residents. Most of the existing farmworker cottages were built on these two sites circa 1937. Historically, many of these sites had no garages and small parking areas. Today, 35, 34 original farmworker cottages exist, and 17 vacant pads indicate where the other additional cottages had existed. 17 of the proposed units would be built on these vacant pads, and the remaining 57 would be built within the avocado, avocado orchard at 800 Camp East. The applicant also proposes to add barbecue and recreation lawn areas. That's a couple more slides here. This would be 800 Camp, the existing site, this would be 800 Camp North, three units would be infilled in this area, or this camp. This is what looks, this is essentially what it looks like on the ground at, for the 57 units that would be built where current avocado orchards exist. And this is the second site on the separate assessor's parcel, and this is known as the Olive Land site, and as mentioned before, that, uh, nine units would be going in there. The mitigated negative declaration required for this project reveals there are no impacts or less than significant impacts from or to this project. The remaining impacts that were potentially significant have been reduced to less than significant levels, with the imposition of conditions and a mitigation measure. The conditions and mitigation measure must be satisfied prior to the project's construction or use or during its operation. Public comments on the environmental document and project were responded to by the planning division. The public comments and responses are included in your staff report. As discussed in the findings of your report, the proposed farmworker housing complex and variance are consistent with the intent and purpose, pardon me, the provisions other than Turo County General Plan and the non-coastal zoning ordinance. Notably, the proposed farmworker project advances the county goals of providing increased housing opportunities and housing assistance for this special needs population. The planning division recommends approval of the mitigated negative declaration, the plan development permit for the 74 farmworker housing complex, and the variance for five tandem parking spaces. And you also notice that I've added or included a errata to conditions, and most of those conditions would be transportation conditions that we, we are, have, have made changes to. And that concludes my presentation, are there any questions?
Um, yeah, I think we do have some questions. Uh, Mr. Anthony, before that, let me, I need to read your disclosure. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask each planning commissioner to state to the record whether he or she, he, uh, whether he, he or she has received any oral or written, uh, expedited communication regarding the agenda item, uh, that's, uh, that's not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Uh, please discuss, excuse me, please disclose the substance of that information, only if that information is not contained, uh, in the record before us on this matter. Commissioner Multer?
I have no disclosure.
Commissioner Dukas?
Uh, not even Google.
Commissioner Weisner?
It's interesting now that that has become a significant legal matter now, Googling. Um, uh, the only disclosure that I have is just for the matter of transparencies, uh, but I don't feel that it, just remain here. I am the general counsel for the Housing Authority of the City of Santa Paula. This does not come under that entity's purview, but it is adjacent, and, uh, we do probably serve the same population, but as far as decision-making, uh, I don't think there's a need for me to recuse myself, because this would not come in front of that body. Um, if county, county council has a different opinion, like a, a good lawyer would, um, well, I shouldn't say it that way, should I, probably?
I, I'll have to ask you a question now, I'll have to put you under cross-examination to make sure that I'm a good lawyer then, right?
A great lawyer.
Okay, then. Uh, no, I just wanted to be clear, what is your position again with the City of Santa Paula?
Not the City of Santa Paula, the Housing Authority for the City of Santa Paula, I am their general counsel.
And does the, um, Housing Authority have any discretionary authority over projects within its sphere of influence?
No.
And you indicated that this matter's not going to come before the City of Santa Paula in any way, shape, or form?
In front of the Housing Authority, we are separate from the city.
Does the Housing Authority have any, uh, say as to, um, uh, regional housing numbers or assessments or responsibilities with regards to this area?
No.
Thank you. I have no questions, I, I, I agree with you that there is no prohibited, um, overlapping offices or responsibilities with regards to your being general counsel for the Santa Paula Housing Authority.
Other than that, I have, uh, no other expediting information regarding this.
My only familiarity with the, with the, uh, property and locations is, um, having been on probably several of the properties at some point in time through the course of my previous occupation, but I haven't been around the area for 15 years, probably, in that general area. Okay, uh, questions, uh, Commissioner Mul, uh, Multer? Commissioner Mul, uh, Multer?
I'm glad to see we're having this housing. I think it's very important, and I totally support it. My personal preference would be to have farmworker housing located within the city so that the services that the city provides, like education and getting to the store and everything, would be much more convenient than having it out, but at least it's being done, and that's good. The only question I had had to do with, you mentioned where the children are going to school. I think it's Briggs School District or something, but, and maybe the applicant has to answer this. How are, my question is, how are these children getting to school? Will Briggs bus them in? Are the parents required to take them to school? That would be much more inconvenient. Have you any idea how they're going to get to the school district?
That was not covered in the staff report or in my supplemental findings. I was just looking at impacts that would have on the school district, so.
Well, then, I'll wait and ask that to the applicant. Thank you. That's basically all I have of staff. Thank you.
Years ago, we, I, I know that it came before the planning commission, but I don't know what happened subsequently. There was a farmworker housing effort ordinance, and, and is that how finding one A can be made on page one oh one, that, that because farmworkers will spend time recreating outside, therefore, it's consistent with the intent of the open space land use designation? Or, or was it more because of the farmworker housing ordinance that it's consistent with the land use designation?
I'm sorry, could you, could you repeat the question, please?
Okay, on page one oh one, finding one A, it's about the third line from that paragraph. It says, "When not working, the farmworkers will spend time recreating on-site. Therefore, the project is consistent with the intent and provisions of the county's open space land use designation." Is it, is it more that we have a farmworker housing ordinance, and that's how this is consistent with our, with the intent and provisions of the open space land use?
Primarily, it's consistent because it is, as it mentions there on the line previously, it says essentially, "Open space, an approved land of, of managed production of resources and for recreational purposes." Next line says, "The proposed project includes ten of farmworkers who are employed for the production of agricultural resources." That would be the primary reason why it was consistent. It was just also an additional amount of evidence that I was putting into this, that on this site, within the project area, people will be not only living, but also will be recreating, which is an additional reason why it would be consistent with that policy.
Okay, on, on page one oh two, it talks about members of the farmworkers' household. These are, these are people who are employed by Limonera, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they'll, they'll be the ones that are verifying that, that they're farmworkers. Could you go back, not to this one, this is for nine units, right? Could you go back one slide? How many will go there?
Fifty-seven.
Um, how big's the area? It, on the, on the, you know, the two-dimensional exhibits, I was just struck by how crowded that was.
It's four point five, approximately four point five acres.
Uh-huh. So how many twirling units per acre?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have that information in front of me, but I can get that information for you.
I'm just trying to, I have, I've never been to this area, and it's the same kind of thing. I should visit these areas so I can get my mind around it, how, it just seems so crowded.
Welcome back to the.
That does not, that seems idyllic.
This would be the, what you were looking at on that avocado orchard, this is the site here.
Uh-huh.
Off of Foothill Road, coming into its own private drive, located here, there's barbecue recreation areas, and here, that would be proposed in this area.
How, how big are those little units?
As far as square feet?
Yeah, approximately.
I'll go to the, and I probably neglected to show it to you on the elevation.
Like, those little cottages look like about four hundred, five hundred square feet? It's bigger, smaller? Eight hundred, okay.
So this would be the single wide units. These are the double wide units. And you can see the square footage there, actually, says two hundred twelve, hundred and twenty-one square feet.
Okay, all right.
And then the back, it's a seven hundred and forty-six square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
On the, on the paper, it looks so crowded.
Okay.
All right.
Right, thank you.
Um, is there any redesign possible to allow for better parking so it's not so stacked? I'm just wondering if, if there was some reason why you needed to, to get out of there, you know, super, super fast. I can't even imagine why or a reason, but, you know, it's just so stacked. Is there any way to reconfigure those to allow for better parking so that you don't have the stacked parking?
On our end, I'd have to defer to planning director's call on that.
Commissioner Ducey, this site is designed much the same manner as a mobile home park is designed, where tandem parking is pretty standard. So it, it's, it's patterned after mobile home parks that we have approved recently. So there's been a lot of work in, into the design of this and into the tandem parking issue, and I believe that we've made, made the findings. Okay.
If I may, Commissioner Ducey, is that it does meet the requirements, the parking requirements of the zoning ordinance. I understand your question is, is different. It's, it looks like it's, would be crowded in there, but as far as just a matter of what, we would follow as far as our ordinance, it does meet those requirements.
Okay, so, so that already is, is demonstrated to, to work. On page one-ten, it talks about water quality violations, and it looks like it was self-reported. They must have, maybe I should ask the applicant this, but I was just wondering how those violations were resolved, and if this, you know, additional number of people will exacerbate that problem.
What I, I can answer as far as from the regulatory or agency's responses, Environmental Health was working closely with the Regional Water Quality Control Board on this, and there had been a suspension from the, or they had held back the Environmental Health Division, its approval or its position on the project, waiting till that there was some established or plan that was acceptable to both the Water Quality Control Board and also to Environmental Health. Once they received that.
You know, I heard you, but I didn't understand what you said. Could you, could you, I'm sorry.
Sure. So the Environmental Health Division had reviewed the project in early two thousand eight, and they had said, yes, with minimal conditions, we approve the project. When there was information that came from the Water Quality Control Board that they were in violation, that information came to us in September of two thousand eight. When that information came in, the control board, or rather, the Environmental Health Division changed its memo, its response to us on the project, and said, "We have to say that it's potentially significant as far as impacts until this matter's resolved." They took the, they decided to take the lead from the Water Quality Control Board, saying that if they had an acceptable plan to the state board, then Environmental Health Division would be satisfied, and they did come to that agreement. I think it was in December, I think they finally reached that.
Okay.
So that's from a regulatory standpoint.
And am I correct, am I correct that, well, my basic purpose is to make sure that these are safe, humane, you know, to the standard living conditions?
Certainly.
Am I correct in understanding that this was a self-reported, you know, this was, it's not like they, they did something, they found in violation, you know, they, they came forward with this information, am I correct?
They can answer further, but the general response that, that we would have as far as my understanding is that what they did is they reported per their regular requirements to the Water Quality Control Board, and then it was sent back to them, they received response. They were not compliant for some of those issues.
Okay. And, and so, that's, that's their purview, but from, from our standpoint, does this have the potential to make that, that violation more likely?
No, and, and I'm sorry, I probably wasn't clear. As of December, when the Environmental Health Division then received the information back from the Water Quality Control Board, that the board, the state board, had an acceptable plan, Environmental Health at that point said they were satisfied, issued us a new memo that said impacts would be less insignificant as long as compliance with this plan was achieved.
Thank you.
Should we, no questions? I'm curious, on that slide you got up there.
Sure.
Recognizing you right off of Foothill on a private road there, is there a secondary exit? I don't know, or maybe I ought to ask the applicant.
I'm not aware of that, to be honest, as far as I know, there's just a single.
Okay. Question?
May I follow up on it?
Yes.
And we, none of the other agencies that you've cleared, have sent this to, have required second access, such as the fire department?
Fire did not.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is it because it's so small?
Question from Mr. Multer.
On this RADA that, that we received, taking off all those conditions on cost for Foothill Road.
Yes.
Why was this, why was this changed?
Again, I'm one, I'm sure the applicant will have, but the applicant had questions as far as looking at those conditions and had some objections for several smaller points, but the major points seemed to be for the dedications and road requirement, road improvement requirements along, I'll back up to the slide, along Eliso Canyon Road, which would be the road right in that spot. Of course, Foothill runs here, Eliso Canyon runs right here. And the applicant's position, and again, they can correct me if I misstate it, is that there, as there was no access being taken on Eliso Canyon Road, they believed that Transportation Department's requirements of dedication and improvements were not necessary and simply not fair. So we had a series of meetings going back and forth, and the result is the RADA that you see before you.
Are you saying that the Transportation Department agreed to this, these, taking out these conditions?
Yes.
Unless they. Signed off on this, saying this is okay?
There is, there is some point of disagreement or question, possibly on one or two, and I think he could discuss that with you, but as a general, the meetings resulted in this general agreement that this was the direction, but I believe that the applicant may have some, want to express opinions on one or two.
Just to confirm, Commissioner Multer, the, the RADA that you see before you was the Transportation Department, conditions were written by the Transportation Department, so they were at the meeting. They, they rewrote their conditions in this manner, so yes, they, they, they agreed to these conditions.
Good, so they signed off on that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open up the, the public hearing. The applicant would like to make a presentation. If you state your name and address, please, for the record.
Okay, my name is Don Jensen with Jensen Design and Survey, and I'm here representing Limonera Company. Also with me today are Alex Teague and Jeff Conrad. Jeff's the architect on the project, and Alex is one of the VPs with Limonera.
Excuse me, I, I can't hear you. Would you speak up a little?
Okay, is that better?
A lot better.
Should I start over? My name's Don Jensen, I'm with Jensen Design and Survey. I'm here representing Limonera Company. Also with me today is Alex Teague, VP with Limonera Company, and Jeff Conrad, the architect on the project. I wanted to address the few things that did come up in your questions of staff. Primarily, the schools out there, there's two. If we, there's Olive Land School, which is a kind of a cool little elementary school right along Foothill Road. It's generally right in this area, in between the two projects. And then Briggs School is down off Briggs Road, I think it's about right here. And there is a bus system that goes between the schools and services that area for both those schools. On the sewer, what really happens, we do operate a private onsite sewer treatment plant within the facilities that Limonera has out there, and that facility is self-reporting to the Water Quality Control Board, and they changed their reporting requirements in two thousand and three, and that reporting form didn't come to the office, didn't get filled out correctly, and it took, you know, three years for the Water Quality Control Board to catch up with the reporting requirements. That was all taken care of as part of this process. When they saw what we were doing, they said, "Hey, you're here, you gotta take care of this first." So there was a little bit of delay in the process to take care of that. It resulted in a small change in the sampling program for the plant, but the plant's always been operational to whatever requirements the Water Quality Control Board has put on it. On the density issue, we have about eleven and a half units to the acre for that one section, but it is pretty much in character as a planning director called out for a modular home-type development. And the final thing we did want to talk about is the traffic conditions did get adjusted, and we saw them this morning when you did, again, although we have been aware of the changes going on. The condition that was TD seven, which is the improvements on Foothill Road, we look at Foothill Road as something that's kind of gone through the land out there forever. It's been functioning fine at twenty-three feet, but in the Traffic Department's review of that condition, they decided that, heck, that road's gotta be thirty-two feet, and they thereby put a condition on our frontage, which is a two-hundred-plus acre site, three thousand feet long, that we should pay a share of that fee, or that widening, even though it's not widened anywhere else from Peck Road to Wells Road, all, you know, out there in the middle of the rural country we're all trying to preserve, we're getting hit with a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar fee to assist in someday, maybe, widening that road, which I think in all likelihood, in our lifetime, might never happen. We're still talking about that condition, but we just want to bring it before you, we're not, we basically agree with the staff's recommendation, we'd like to go forward, but if the council, I mean, the commission would like to weigh in on that condition, we'd certainly wouldn't mind you reviewing it, because we do feel, we do have another, two other traffic fees that we are paying, one to the City of Santa Paula, one to the county, their normal temp fee. I think the total of those were about, I just, they're about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars between the two, those two fees. This additional fee that really we've been working on the last few weeks, the primary reason why we got continued from two weeks ago till today, results in that hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar fee, which to widen Foothill Road just doesn't seem like a logical reason to ask us to pay a fee. The other, the point there that, that Alex actually asked me to make is, if this part, we have one driveway on the Foothill Road in that area, and the logic that the, the Transportation Department is using to put that fee on the table is, our project has three thousand feet of frontage, and, you know, our response to that is, we could have put this property, or this project on a parcel that had fifty feet of frontage. We happened to choose this one because it's the right place, but the properties out there have a lot of discontinuities and different shapes and forms, and it's almost happenstance that we have this length of frontage resulting in this type of fee coming up kind of at the eleventh hour. We've been in this process for five years, when we first found out about this fee about, you know, March, I mean, about three weeks ago. So anyhow, that's pretty much all we really wanted to say right now, unless there's questions from the commission.
Commissioner Wilson?
Let's discuss the fee then.
Okay.
All right. Did you offer up any proposed alternatives? Understand, our concern is that there's sufficient funding at the time, in our lifetime, that this road deems to be, needs to be widened. Did you have any alternatives that you offered up that you would like for us to consider?
Maybe I should talk to Mr. Teague about that and come back.
Look, if you'd like to bring that back.
Okay.
Okay, so, again, so we can properly discuss that for you. All right, you'll have another opportunity, so you don't have to make a snap decision right now, but, and the reason I say that, we've faced this before in other rural areas and situations where we know what the intent is, we want to secure that thirty years from now, we decide the money's not their issue, but at the same time, we understand for you to bankroll something twenty, thirty years prior, present value money, yada, yada, yada. So if you have some type of other information or alternatives? So, if you have some type of other information or alternatives, I'm sure this commission will be willing to listen to it.
Okay.
Just to clarify, though, you do have a driveway on that road?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'll call you back up shortly. Okay, I have half a dozen speaker cards here. I'll call them in the order that I have them. If you'd come up and state your name and your address or your residence, for the record, please. Catherine Benner?
She's no longer here.
Okay. Sonia Flores? Also down. Julie, Julie Bula? Pronouncing that correctly? Sorry.
It's all right. It's Julie Bula. My name is Julie Bula. My address is 10109 Erie Street in Ventura, 93004. Chairman Rodriguez and members of the commission. I am a land use consultant. I previously was employed by the County Planning Division and also the Agricultural Commissioners Office, I'm sure you all remember. And I'm also a land use advisor to the Agricultural Futures Alliance Farmworker Housing Task Force. They are an oversight committee that oversees the work of Sonia Flores, who is with the House Farmworkers Group. The Ag Futures Alliance has smaller farmworker housing support groups in most of the cities that adjoin agricultural operations. And we have been following this particular project since before it was submitted to the county for processing back in 2005. It has taken four long years for this project to reach your committee, your commission, rather, for a decision. And the task force strongly supports the project and recommends that your commission approve the planned development and variance entitlements. In 2002, your commission might recall that there was a County Farmworker Housing Study Committee, and at that time, the committee, as well as the Ag Futures Alliance Farmworker Housing Committee, which was the predecessor to the task, the task force, generated two reports that came out in the same month, and they both took a look at the number of farmworkers in the county and the kind of housing they were living in. And both of those studies documented a critical need for housing for farmworkers that is safe, clean, and decent. The reports noted that many farmworkers are living 13, 14, 15 or more people in a single small house, and with those kind of numbers, you usually wind up with four or five people living in a garage, and often is the case with farmworker families, there's always a number of children involved too. Back in 2002, I served on the County Farmworker Housing Study Committee as a representative from the Ag Commissioners Office, and was quite illuminating to me to learn, based on a survey that was conducted by county staff at the time, that the majority of farmworkers and their families who responded to the surveys were living in substandard, substandard conditions, some of which could best be described as squalid and subhuman. As an aside to this, I want to note to your commission that the critical need for farmworker housing is not only a professional issue for me, it is also a personal issue. Similar to a majority of the farmworkers that serve as farm labor in the county, my mother is Hispanic, except in her case, she came to the United States from Cuba soon after World War II and found work in the Texto Mills in North Carolina, which at the time, the Texto Mills were comparable to the role of our local ag industry, and that was pretty much the primary labor market in North Carolina at the time. From the time I was four years old until I was 15, my family lived in a small, substandard, squalid home. And I realized, after I served on the committee in 2002, though, that my family is much better off than most of the farmers, farmworkers in the county, because we were three people in a small house, not 13, 14, or 15. Amazingly, the Limonera Project is the first housing complex that has been proposed in the county since the board supervisors approved the Sespe Village Farmworker Housing Complex out near, between Fillmore and Pyru. And that was developed by the Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation, who also now is processing another permit for a farmworker housing complex out on the east side of the Pyru community. In an effort to facilitate the development of multi-unit farmworker housing projects, in 2002, the board supervisors amended the zoning ordinance, and again, some of your commissioners may remember this, to change the permits required in the agriculture-exclusive and open space zones from a conditional use permit to a planned development. And that was to allow complexes to be developed by right, provided that the project adhered to certain development standards and met required findings from the zoning ordinance. This project, the Limonera Project, is beneficiary of this ordinance change, as will be the Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation project, if it is also approved by your committee, your commission. As I mentioned, the purpose of those changes in the zoning ordinance was to move these projects quicker along and to expedite their approval and development. And the task force has expressed a lot of consternation about it taking four long years to reach this point where the Limonera Project is before your committee. I have a couple of suggestions with how the Cabrillo project could be processed at this time. I've heard that there has been a reduction in the number of permits that are currently being processed in the planning department because of the current economic downturn. And my suggestion is that, as has been raised by the Ag Commissioners Office years ago, also by the Ag Policy Advisory Committee, and as well by the task force, perhaps there should be some priority placed on processing the farmworker housing complexes that are proposed, because, first of all, there's so few of them, there is such a critical need. These projects are proposing multi-units as opposed to one or two units that get developed every year or so by farmworkers, excuse me, by growers. And it would be very good to see more of these projects be processed as quickly as possible and get on the ground because of this overwhelming need. I would like, on behalf of the task force, to thank the Limonera Principals for proposing this project and for seeing it through, and again, I would encourage your commissioner to support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don Jensen. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sleeping here. Bernardo Perez.
Good morning, Chair Rodriguez and planning commissioners, and a special greeting to my neighbor, Mike Westner from Moore Park.
I was just gonna disclose, Mr. Perez and I are personal friends.
I could stop right now, I don't want to get the applicant in trouble either.
No, 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 I just, I feel like we'd disclose, you know, Bernardo and his family and my family, coffee, meals together, I've supported him as the city councilman, and so, there's your disclosure.
All right, all right.
Good to see you again, Mr. Perez. I'd also say that I served as chief of police of Moore Park during Mr. Perez's tenure for three years.
Maybe I'd better sit down, I don't know.
Oh, no, you don't get out of here.
But I'm here in a different capacity.
I don't want to either.
I've been paying attention to you two also, though, so. No, I'm a project manager with Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation, and I want to get her card before I leave today also. Couple of thoughts. I've been following this project as a member of the Santa Paula Farmworker Housing Group, which is an outgrowth of the House Farmworkers Group that the previous speaker mentioned. I'm also a project manager for a proposed project in the city of Santa Paula, 150 units, and about half of them will be for farmworker families as well. Want to speak to a couple of things, one that was mentioned also, and that is, the time that process takes. And oftentimes, there's some good reasons as to why certain policies and procedures have to be addressed, and maybe the time that it does take to resolve those. There are other times, however, when, as has been mentioned, things come up at the last minute, after a very ample time of identifying issues and concerns, and that just, I think, causes a problem for everybody, of course, decision makers, certainly the applicants, but most importantly, I think we sometimes, because we're so wrapped up in the nuts and bolts of the application, we forget about the ultimate beneficiary, and that is the families, the children, the workers that will occupy this housing. And so, as you address some of these issues that, you know, expand upon the actual application in front of you, keep that in mind, that as an issue does come up, like the funding for proposed roadway improvements, I've got to think, there's some great minds working on these issues, there's got to be some examples that are already out there, out there that can be applied and implemented, and it may not cost money like right now, which has an impact on the affordability of the project, and therefore the affordability of the rent levels for the, for the families. So, I'm also involved with other regional planning groups. I'm not here to speak for them, but they revolve around, you know, compact living, urban design, appropriate living environments and locations. And there was a time when, when the ranchers did provide housing to a greater degree, and I think getting back to that, as Limonera is proposing to do, makes eminent sense, given the limited land availability in this area anyway, and it just speaks, it just goes hand in hand with the support of the SOAR measures out here, that if we want to support the ag industry, then we've got to support the labor to support that industry as well, and that includes providing them housing, so. Thank you.
Question, Bernardo? Since you've demonstrated your depth of knowledge of the matter in front of us, with these 57 units and the 150 you're proposing in Santa Paula, how close are we gonna get to that number? What I'm looking for, is this is gonna help, or is there still such a large number out there that, but it's the right step?
It can only help, and it is the right step.
But there's still a large number?
And every, you know, every project that we do, we provide, we have to provide market studies, and the demand continues to outpace the availability.
So, but the number of housing we should provide or could provide, I guess, for this particular labor market, it's pretty significant? I'm trying to get a graph.
This is, this is a significant number that would be added to the, if I'm understanding your question correctly.
Well, I don't know, are we short 1,000 units in the county, or are we, I'm trying to, I know it's a step, but I'm trying to get a feel, how big is the need, I guess is my question?
I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I know we're moving forward confident that there will still be a need to fill our, our units. We wouldn't want to build a project and have it sit there empty.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe it's not a question for Bernardo, other than the fact you're here, it just occurred to me, and I think I'll address it to the applicant. Thank you. But the question is, has to do with screening in the application process and enforcement and insurance that, that the 333 proposed new residents that'll go into that housing will somehow stay at that number and not become a warehouse, or mini warehouses, that I certainly experienced in dealing with, neighborhood problems in City of Moore Park, where private residences suddenly became boarding houses, including garage housing, garage tenants, and so, if you guys think about that, I'd appreciate a response to that. Last speaker card I have is Karen Flock.
Good morning, Chair and members of the commission. My name is Karen Flock. I'm the Real Estate Development Director with Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation, and I'm also a member of the Ag Futures Alliance Farmworker Housing Group that was talked about earlier, as well as other groups that support farmworker housing. I've been with Cabrillo for over 27 years, and during that time, we've been developing and advocating for farmworker housing. I was the project manager for the Rancho Sespe Development when I first came to Cabrillo, that was mentioned earlier, and yeah, we're just kind of focusing on, this is the first major farmworker housing development in the county since Rancho Sespe. And it's also very exciting, and of course, I urge you to support it, because it's the first major growers-supported or sponsored farmworker housing since I've been working in this field. There is a tremendous need for farmworker housing, as has been mentioned, there's probably 20,000 farmworker households in the county, it's hard to get an exact number, and most of them do not have decent housing. So, we just need more great housing like this, and we're gonna continue to work on this issue. Couple of, just wanted to speak to a couple of the things that were mentioned earlier, were asked about earlier, whether it's good to have farmworker housing in or adjacent to a larger community, and, and yes, ideally, that would be true, but there really is already at Limonera, a great community of farmworkers living there, and they have an excellent property management arm that's, you know, taking good care of those homes and making sure that they don't get overcrowded. And they also have, they have the infrastructure needed to do this, this is one of the big issues that comes up in looking for sites that can be developed, that, the lack of water and sewer availability. So they have those things here, they're taking advantage of the existing infrastructure, and it's a great opportunity, been hearing about it for a while, and looking forward to seeing this go ahead. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, I'm sorry, Karen. Since you're the real estate person, I know there's the concern, when we had the discussions a number of years ago about amending the ordinance for farmworker housing and not putting it inside cities, et cetera, the concern is, we approve it for this purpose, and then two years from now, we find out it's really become apartment buildings or not the intended purpose. I guess what I'm looking for here is, what kind of assurances can we work with, or have you dealt with, that it remains exactly what the ordinance calls for, as opposed to, next thing we know, now becomes view ship, view property that's being sold?
Right. Well, my experience is more directly, of course, with what Cabrillo does, and we certainly typically have funding sources that require that we're providing farmworker housing when we do this, but we just, we do annual recertifications of people anyway, and ensure that they are in farmworker housing. And I don't know the exact requirements that are being placed on this project, but I'm sure that there's something similar. It's certainly in the interest of Limonera to be providing housing for farmworkers as opposed to, because there's a need for, for farmworkers to have housing. So I hope that kind of answers your question.
That helps me, thank you.
I have one more question.
Mr. Molter.
I was in Napa a few years ago, and a group of wine growers got together and got some land that one of them had, and they combined their resources and built farmworker housing. Has that ever happened here? We have Limonera, which is a tremendously large corporation doing this. Is your organization working with groups to come together and provide housing? Because for one, for one farmer, or for one person running agriculture, it might be too expensive.
There are some very special things happening in Napa, and they have kind of some, I think, special resources up there. There's definitely been an interest in the last couple of years in locally, in farmers supporting or providing farmworker housing. It is very difficult, and that's one reason that this effort by Limonera is so exciting. But definitely, there's growers who are advocating and supporting farmworker housing, and I'm hoping that we'll see some more specific efforts by local growers to actually build farmworker housing, but it's probably gonna be by individual growers rather than groups coming together.
And maybe one other question, if I may, and I'd like to ask the applicant of this too. In relation to single farmworkers and families, what's, for example, what's the ratio?
Now, I'm not sure what the ratio is, there's a tremendous need for both types of housing, and it's easier to get financing and put together family housing, but housing for single or unaccompanied workers is a tremendous need, and we really need to figure out some solutions for them.
So if I were, like, if Limonera and I was putting together this farmworker housing, could they simply lean toward only hiring singles? Because that would be, they could put more people in that housing and provide more workers for their fields, or, I mean, why would they hire families? I mean, why would they provide, I know the answer, but I want to hear from you, why would they, why would they prefer to have families when they could have singles?
Well, I think you should hear it from Limonera, I think there's, again, there's both. There's, there's both single workers, and there's workers who have families, and there's a tremendous need for housing for both.
I'll ask that too.
No other questions? I don't have any cards that indicate any opposition. The applicant would like to come forward and respond to some of these questions on rebuttal.
The, regarding the foothill road condition, which is now TD4, rather than get into a prolonged discussion about what the final fee might be, it might turn out to be 21, 47, 42 per unit, but what I'd like to suggest is maybe we can add a few words in there after the, in the final line of that condition, maybe we can put the words that 21, 47, 42 are as mutually agreed with the planning, a public works director, or planning director, I don't know which is more appropriate, Kim, but we'd like to have the flexibility to adjust that fee after we agree to it, just because I think there's more negotiation that needs to go into that.
Okay, so...
No, so I guess what I was looking for, because we've done something similar in another situation in the part of the county, is not having to have you write a check, is what I'm looking at, but also giving the county a surety that when they do want to pull the trigger, it's available to them. So that's where I was, I hear what you're saying about the mutually agreed upon, and maybe that's something that we can do to let that negotiation, what I was looking more is some kind of a surety, a bond type setup, it's a minimal cost to you, but the county does have the resource, if at that point in time, and I know this won't happen, Limonera isn't there and doesn't have any money, but we have to widen the road.
Right.
So we have something that we can go use, so that was kind of more where I was coming from to...
I'd like to jump on that, though.
Jump.
And follow, this is probably not appropriate to address to you, but for staff, is this TD4 a mitigation measure? Because I thought that you couldn't have, is this, is this a mitigation measure? This fee?
It was not outlaid as a mitigation measure in the NPA.
Okay, so we do have the flexibility to, you know how you can't mitigate by just paying?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I would caution you, as I've cautioned the applicant, because the Transportation Director couldn't be here today, as we've asked him to come and explain his fee, but I do agree with Mr. Jensen to say, or as agreed to by the Public Works Director or the Transportation Department Director, because there is a pave-out policy, that's not my policy to enforce, but it's the Transportation Director's policy to enforce, so if he's not here to explain that, I would be a little bit leery about waiving the fees or reducing the fees, he's already put in an agreement that they would only have to pay a certain fee per dwelling, so they didn't have to pay the 158 upfront, 158,000, they would have to pay 21, 147 each time, if they wanted to pull 10 units, they would pay 21,000. I believe that is still a negotiation that they can work out, and can have a meeting with the Public Works Director, but I would be a little bit cautious about waiving the requirement without the Transportation Department Director here to explain.
All right, then, we'll...
We're basically in full agreement there, we just want a little bit more time to work on that, and if it becomes a bonded number, that would be certainly something we can explore as far as the agreement, so I think that would, just give us a little latitude, we want you to be aware of it.
All right, all right.
And, I'm sorry?
No, no, I was just going to say, that's what I'm trying to propose with the Commission here, is to give you the latitude, but also the guarantees that the Transportation Director and the Planning Director would feel comfortable with at the same time, so I'm just trying to give you that area for the professionals to work that out.
Good.
But it doesn't sound like this is a deal breaker, and he won't get this, you know, the recommended actions unless we, that we get involved in that detail, so it's not necessary for us to weigh in on that, is that correct?
I don't believe it's necessary we add that additional language, I hear that's what the applicant is saying.
I agree.
Okay.
Good. I think I'm going to let Mr. Teague talk to you about the way Limonera runs their housing program out there, since...
Okay, if you would, Mr. Teague, and before you leave, if you'd fill out a speaker card. Appreciate it, thank you.
Good morning, Alex Teague, Senior Vice President, COO, Limonera Company, Limonera Company, trying to get that out and about, the question was regarding single versus family, I believe, we have a policy of only putting single families in each one of the units, so that's why we don't, that prevents kind of the overcrowding now, some may have four people in the family, five or six, but we have a very strict policy on single families in there. I believe there's also a question of, why wouldn't you hire just single people? Well, that's kind of an issue we don't want to get into, because we don't want to say, okay, you can come work for us, but you have to divorce your family or go off and run off by yourself, so generally speaking, in agriculture, as any business, you have the main wage earner come along and usually support the family, and that's the reason we do that.
I want to be certain that you understand that I'm not for hiring just single people.
No, I know you're...
I mean, that's not my bias.
No, I understand.
I was concerned about getting those kids to school, too, and so I'm concerned with the families, not just single, I just, I just threw that out as a question.
No, I understood, and no problem, please don't take my comments any other way. As far as school, I think Don did a pretty good job in mentioning Olive Lands and Briggs School, we currently have the bus system that goes through the ranch as it stands today, and we have approximately 192 homes scattered throughout there already, so as has been mentioned before, we have pretty good infrastructure to take care of both of them, the little ones to the older ones.
Mr. Teague, enlighten us on the application process to be selected for housing, as I said, having worked in the City of Moore Park and having to address neighbor issues, neighbor problems related to overcrowding, it's not uncommon, or it is entirely possible that in a residence, in a residential city, that you have a tenant, that after the fact, after the lease or whatever it is, it's signed, over time, slowly converts that residence into high occupancy residence.
That's a violation of our rental contract.
As we said, after the working hour, people are recreating outdoors, and all the problems that come with that, I guess, so I'm asking, how we're going to, how you're going to deal with this issue, and how you're going to enforce to make sure that it doesn't become more than what's being approved here on this, in this process?
Well, we have in our rental contract that you sign up as a single family, you state the members of that family, and any amendment you want to do it, you have to come into the office and amend that, if there's a violation, we give them proper notices legally sent, and we have done before, where people have tried that, we've asked them, the occupants to leave, if not, we serve eviction notices, if that answers your question.
Yeah, and how do you select, how do you select, or will you select tenants for this property? I'm assuming that you would consider priority, your own employees first, and then expand from there into the greater community?
Yeah, we, our own employees, which are about 50% of our current ones, what we do is we have a standing list of people, there's requests for, you know, two rooms, three rooms, different types of housing, a lot more for three rooms lately, by the way, and basically, it's a priority, and then we just start, you move up the list once somebody moves out.
And they're not necessarily employed by Limonera, or wouldn't necessarily be employed by Limonera?
They're in agriculture, they're in agriculture, but maybe a farm labor contractor, or some other, something associated.
So the standing list for housing is not specifically your list, but it's an ag list that's retained somewhere?
I'm sorry?
The list for housing, you see, people are on the list for housing.
Right, that's our list, yeah.
That's your list?
Yeah.
Anybody that's not on your list, that defines themselves as ag, ag workers, how would you verify that?
Generally, when Rosie Castillo, the property manager, she goes verifying credit and employment during the applicants.
Okay, so there is some assurance that if they're not employed by Limonera, that they are still employed within the ag community?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, I'll go ahead and close the, close the public hearing, and open it up to Commissioners for Commerce. Adubus.
I'd like to move the recommended actions, one through four, and this memorandum, is this something that we need to, yeah, enter exhibit, let me, first, enter Exhibit 11 into the record, and move the recommended actions, one through four?
I'll second that, if you'll agree to the language on TD4 of the memorandum, to add the additional language in the last sentence of, or as agreed upon by the Planning Director and Transportation Director.
Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Adubus?
Can you just say the Transportation Director, because actually, the Planning Director doesn't have any authority over that condition.
That's that...
I'm looking, I'm looking at it, and I thought, I thought we understood that we weren't going to change that at all, just could you, I'm sorry, I'm having such a slow brain day, could you just repeat what you said?
Sure, and, yes, the last sentence reads as follows currently, "The per dwelling share shall be $2,147.42, and shall be paid for each unit at such time as the zoning clearance is obtained." What I'm recommending is after the number, additional language, or as agreed to by the Transportation Director.
That sounds...
If I might just provide some language there, in keeping with Commissioner Lester's comment there, or an amount to be mutually agreed to with the Public Works Agency Transportation Director, comma, then the rest of the sentence.
That work for you?
No, she's made a motion, I'm suggesting her to amend it, if she's feeling uncomfortable.
No, I just wanted to make sure that, that it was something, because he cautioned us, so...
No, no, that's what I'm trying to get here.
So being cautious, I'd like to move the language that he refined, per your suggestion, then.
All right, and I'll second that, again.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, can we take a five-minute break here? Okay, can we take a five minute break here? Okay, can we take a five minute break here? Okay, can we take a five minute break here? Item number seven on the agenda. LU-00-0112 Coastal Nurseries and applicant, Robert Madrono. I'm sorry, I take it back, scratch Robert Madrono. Got the number right? Okay, we're gonna have Ms. Gluckert.
Good morning Chair Rodriguez, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Michelle Gluckert-Diana of Planning Division staff. The project before you today is conditional use permit LU-060112 for Coast Nurseries. The site is located in the community of Somas about one mile north of Camarillo and approximately 1,500 feet east of the intersection of Lewis Road, State Route 34, and Los Angeles Avenue, State Route 118. Here's an oblique aerial photo of the property and just to orient you, the front property line along Los Angeles Avenue is on the right side of the screen. The applicant is Steve Fujimoto for Coast Nurseries. The project site is a 32 acre parcel with an agricultural general plan designation and a zoning designation of AE40. CUP 4581 was issued for the existing development on the subject property in 1991. The permit expired in 2001 without being renewed by the applicant. The Planning Division originally issued a notice of violation in 1994 for construction on the site without benefit of permit. In 2004, the notice of violation was amended to include the expired CUP. In August 2006, Coast Nurseries applied for conditional use permit LU-060112 to comply with the notice of violation. In October 2007, the Planning Division imposed civil administrative penalties, which are being assessed against the applicant for each day of violation. Approval of this CUP, LU-060112, and compliance with the permit conditions will abate the zoning violation. The request is for a new CUP to continue the existing agricultural operation for the production of bedding plants. The CUP also proposes the expansion of the existing operation to include approximately 243,000 square feet of new structures to augment the current 441,000 square feet of structures which were approved as part of CUP 4581. The proposed new structures include greenhouses, seed plug houses and germination buildings, personnel support buildings, covered shipping docks, transplanting buildings, and new residents for the property owner, new boilers and storage containers. And the square footages of all of these structures are listed on page 14 of your packet on the front page of Exhibit 2. If approved, the total square footage allowed would be 684,023 square feet. There's no proposed change to the existing number of employees and the height of all proposed structures on the site will not exceed 25 feet. This is the existing site plan, which is also located in your staff report as Exhibit 5. And again, just to orient you, the northern property line along Los Angeles Avenue is on the left side of the screen. This site plan is the proposed site plan at build out and the buildings that are outlined in red are all of the proposed buildings. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project and one potentially significant environmental impact was identified under transportation circulation. The project is located within the State Route 118 impact zone and has the potential to generate additional traffic on Highway 118 during peak hours between the city of Moore Park and the Somas area. State Route 118 is currently operating at a less than acceptable level of service. As a mitigation measure, the applicant will be required to keep an annual log documenting the number of trips generated by the proposed use to verify that no additional trips are generated by this project. The log is to be submitted to the Planning Division on July 1st for the first two years of the permit and thereafter, the log shall be updated annually and kept on the project site for periodic review by the Planning Division. Failure to demonstrate that there is no additional traffic generated by the project results in two conditions. The applicant will pay a traffic impact mitigation fee for all additional trips and any increase in trips shall be restricted to prior to 6:30 a.m. and after 9:00 a.m. and between 3:00 o'clock and 6:00 p.m. on weekdays. Staff has determined that the project is consistent with the permit approval standards listed in Section 8111-1.2.1.1 of the Ventura County Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance. And staff has also determined that the project is consistent with the findings listed in Section 8111.1.2.1.2 of the Ventura County Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance for standards in the AE zone. The justification for all of these findings is contained in your staff report. Notice of the proposed project and this public hearing was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the project site. The notice was published in the local newspaper and there was a public review period for the environmental document. From February 11th to March 3rd of this year, no comments have been received. Staff recommends that your commission take the following actions. Certified that your commission has read and considered the information contained in the draft mitigated negative declaration and that it reflects the independent judgment of the county. Find on the basis of the mitigated negative declaration, including the initial study and any comments received, that the project as presently constituted and conditioned will avoid the effects or mitigate the effects of the project to a point where clearly no significant effects would occur and that there is no substantial evidence in light of the whole record before the agency that the project may have a significant effect on the environment. Find based on the evidence presented in the staff report and at the hearing that the permit standards are met and approve the draft mitigated negative declaration. Approve and adopt a resolution adopting the proposed findings and approving conditional use permit LU-060112, subject to the conditions in Exhibit 2. And to designate the Planning Director Resource Management Agency as the custodian and location of record proceedings. This concludes my presentation and I am certainly available for any questions. Additionally, I wanted to let your commission know that the applicant, Mr. Fujimoto, as well as his representative, Mr. Nagy, are here and also available for questions that your commission may have. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, for disclosure. I'd like to ask each of the planning commissioners to state for the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written expedited communication regarding the agenda item and that is not already contained in the record before us on this particular matter. Please disclose the substance of this information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter. Any questions to staff?
I have nothing to disclose.
No disclosure, but I do have a question.
The only disclosure that I would have is the fact I drove by it again today when I drive 118 from Moore Park, but other than that, no, I have no disclosures.
And I would have a similar disclosure, driving by it, nothing else. Questions to staff?
Michelle, on page 58, this is regarding the water supplies and who's supplying the water. On page 58, under Item B as in Baker, about the fourth sentence down said, "Further, water for the site is provided by the Camarosa Water District, a regulated provider and backup well." And now please go to page 67. The last paragraph, Item B. "The Ventura County Water Works District Number 19 is considered to have the ability to provide a permanent supply of domestic water." Are we talking about two different things here? Is one for water for the plants, another for water for the people? Is that the difference between those two?
I know that both water supplies were indicated on the application in terms of a different type of water supply from the different providers. I would defer to the applicant to respond to that.
I see the applicant shaking his head, so I'll ask him when he's up here. Thank you.
Any other questions to staff?
So this is going to increase the operations by half again as much? But no extra traffic? Is it regulated? There shall be no more traffic and this log will prove it? Or is it that this log will keep track of what the extra traffic is and then will mitigate for that traffic?
Because the operation is currently existing and they are not increasing the number of employees or their operational hours, they're anticipating that all the activities are going to remain the same. And the mitigation measure from the Transportation Division states that because the level of service of State Route 118 is where it is, that the applicant is not allowed to generate additional trips. And if, the reason for that log is to prove by the applicant that no additional trips are being generated and if additional trips are generated, then those other conditions would apply.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that we weren't deferring a mitigation measure. That's it?
Thank you.
All right, just for clarification on that, the distinction is no peak hour trips, right? No additional peak hour trips?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
No other questions?
Aye.
Mr. Wester?
Two questions. Have we received any additional public or agency comments since the publication of this? Two of us?
No, I have received none.
Okay, and then the second question, again, with these additional buildings, is there gonna be the flooring? Was that ever discussed? I didn't see anything, the type of flooring it was gonna be placed in. To give you an example, some of the other greenhouses and stuff we have discussed are permitted, they've had gravel or some other type of permeable material. So if the greenhouse ever gets removed, we still have land. We don't have it asphalted, it's not concreted, those issues. Like unfortunately, we're having to deal with the former chicken property we had up in Moore Park. So did that come up in any of the conversations and come up with the conditions?
It did not come up in any of my conversations, but again, I would defer to the applicant.
No, I'll ask him.
I'm sure they do have a plan for that, but I'm not aware of it.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we'll hear from the applicant. I have one speaker card, Eric Nagy. You come forward, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name's Eric Nagy, I'm from Jensen Design and Survey. I'm representing the applicant, Steve Fujimoto of Coast Nurseries. And your commission did approve the previous CUP 4581 in 1991 and what we're doing here is requesting approval of a new CUP for the existing facilities on the site. We concur with staff's recommendation that the project be approved and the applicant accepts the conditions of approval as proposed in the project and the staff report. We also concur with the conclusions of the mitigated negative declaration and the applicant accepts the mitigation measure for traffic monitoring. We don't have any change requests to the conditions or mitigation measures. And I'm available for questions now, but I did want to address the couple of questions that seem to be outstanding. Commissioner Westner, the interior of the greenhouses are gravelled. This is very common for greenhouses around the county and the idea there is not to remove any agricultural land out of production and particularly in reference to prime soils. So this will be the same type of situation here as is again the case with most greenhouses. The walkways themselves are concrete, but that's the only portion of the interior of the house that, the interior of the greenhouse that is not gravel and that cannot be returned to productive agricultural soils. So I believe that answers that question and, I'm sorry, I think I'm missing one more question that was outstanding. Mr. Muller?
The question about the water supply.
Yes. The water supply for all the plants comes from an existing onsite agricultural well. So right now, the applicant uses the water from this well for the plants and does not take from the County Water Works District. Only for domestic water. So again, all the agricultural watering comes from the well. Domestic water supply comes from the county.
I'd like to comment on that and what I see happening here kinda confuses me and the fact that you're increasing your square footage of greenhouses by 50%. You're not increasing your staff. I'd hate to be working there if I, I mean, I don't know how this can be. And also, you're increasing your square footage by 50% and you're not gonna have any problem with water? There's enough water in this well to take care of all this? And there's enough staff with existing staff to do 50% more work? How can that be? I'd love to have a business like that.
Yeah. Commissioner Muller, the key thing to understand about the proposed future greenhouses that these will be placed on areas that are already, that already contain outdoor planting. So they already have plants and nursery stock on these areas where these new greenhouses would be, so they're already being used for production. So the staff is already there to take care of those existing areas. The only difference is that a structure will go over it. Yeah.
Then what's the need for the structure? Will there be a change in the planning in the future then?
As far as I know, this is the case again with a lot of greenhouses, that the quality of your product is greatly increased within a greenhouse. You don't have viruses, dust, etc., so that's really the reason for it.
Okay. Could you tell me a little bit about those violations? If we can go back to that vet slide? And explain that? We sure are getting a lot of these, you know, they were in violation and now they want.
Sure.
Yeah, well, and more.
Maybe staff could better review that and if you have any additional questions from myself or the applicant, we can certainly add our input.
Wait, wait, that's not it. That's not it. Yeah, okay, so way back in 1994, there were some structures that just didn't have permits and so they've been removed?
No, those structures were constructed without the appropriate permits and I think part of the reason for that is because, according to- part of the reason for that is because, according to...
But that's, that's fifteen years ago and it's been, uh, when, when...
The, well, let's see, the original conditional use permit was approved in nineteen ninety-one. Um, in nineteen ninety-four, a zoning violation was issued for three mobile homes and several additional agricultural structures. The way I understand that that worked is that the contractor who was constructing those buildings informed the applicant that he was in the process of getting permits or that he had permits, and that turned out to not be the case, so the zoning violation arose. And it's, it's clearly taken some time to resolve between the applicant and the county. Um, as far as the, the minute details of all of that history, um, that's not something I'd privy to. I'd have to...
I'm not interested in the minor, uh, details. I want to know if there's still three mobile homes and, and, I, if there's still three mobile homes.
Uh, yes, there are, and the, the two, the important thing to realize, I think, here is that two of the mobile homes are actually used as offices. So there's only, from what I understand currently, there's only one mobile home on the property that's used as residence. The other two are, are offices. So what this conditional use permit is intending to do is to legalize those structures for the land use portion of this application, um, and show them as offices on the site plan. And I'd encourage you to look at the, uh, existing site plan. If you have that in front of you, it's, I'll defer to that, too. It's a little more accurate than, than, uh, what we see up here on screen.
Any, any other questions? I have a que, I have a question. Well, Commissioner Duquesne is, is following up on hers. So the residence we're talking about that's included in the, in the additional structures is a brand-new residence?
Yes, uh, there is a proposed residence as part of this application for the owner.
Now, is that a mobile home or is that a fixed structure?
That's a fixed structure.
It is?
Yes.
Um, since the mobile homes slash office structures, um, and I don't know if you have this information, maybe, uh, Mr. Fujimoto would be more appropriate answer, but, but since they were not permitted, um, I guess my question has to do with sewage and, and water to those, those particular structures and how, whether that's been addressed as far as this process to legalize them, um, whether they are, although there, they're out of compliance.
Uh, yeah, the, the existing structures are on a septic system. Um, the, that is to code. It, it's, uh, it just needs to be permitted through the land use process. Um, the new structure would also be on septic. Um, and the domestic water supply is shown to be ample by the County Water Works District for the proposed new structures for domestic water supply.
And the existing, uh, collection and drainage areas that were originally permitted, are adequate then, uh, to accommodate the additional structures because you're not really putting more land into production? You're just covering land you're already using for production?
Um, that...
Is that correct?
Essentially, yes, but let me make an important distinction here.
I'm curious to know whether there's going to be additional runoff that's beyond the capacity of what was originally permitted.
Uh, that, that's a great question, and, um, this is, this is addressed in the conditions of approval. Um, the, um, existing drainage is adequate and appropriately designed for the existing facilities. Now, when these new facilities go in, we'll need to do another hydrology report, uh, and there are some detention and drainage improvements shown on the proposed plan to accommodate for the new development. So yes, the drainage would change, and we've addressed that through, um, the addition of some detention on-site.
Okay. Um, any other questions? Thank you. Um, I have no other speaker cards. Nobody's speaking, um, in opposition to the application. Um, anything else you'd like to answer?
Uh, nothing that I need to add here. Um, and again, if there's any additional questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Okay. Uh, staff, closing statements?
None, thank you.
Well, is there, is there something else that you can say about that, uh, the violation? Was it, has it been gone ongoing for fifteen years? Am I not reading this right? It was originally issued in ninety-four and it's been resolved now?
The approval of this permit and the applicant's, um, compliance with the conditions will abate the violation. The violation is still existing.
And the violation was they didn't have permits? They just didn't pull the permits? He was told someone was pulling the permits, they never did?
The violation was for construction without permits.
And, and I, I was informed that he was assured that, could you just come, could he come up?
Uh, Mr. Fujimoto, if you would.
Could you just explain this, this story?
I'm Steve Fujimoto, President of Coast Nurseries.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm trying to get my mind around this, you know?
Sure, no problem. Uh, unfortunately, I wasn't directly involved myself. This is something that my dad had started. Um, we had hired a contractor for our original, excuse me, greenhouses, and, uh, we were, or he was under the impression that he was pulling the, the permit for the original structures, and he came, he came to find out that it wasn't. And then, those weren't the only structures we put up, but after that had happened, we had continued building structures, including the, uh, getting the mobile homes for the office space and the mobile home for, for the, um, worker house, single caretaker housing. So that's what had happened. Now, recently, we had been, before the CUP issue came up, we were trying to rectify that situation and getting everything permitted, and then everything stopped all of a sudden because of the CUP issue, us not realizing what had happened. We had one facilities manager in charge, he was in charge of most of the construction a, after that original contractor, and then he terminated with us. We had somebody new and during that time, the CUP expired. So that's what had happened. So everything stopped. We were in the process of, uh, permitting all, everything we could, you know, everything that we needed to, and we went through a lot of the work, but then everything stopped because of the CUP issue. And so, once the CUP issue is fixed, we think that most everything else, there's, all that permitting should be done.
I really appreciate this explanation because, um, it's, you're, you're, you're unlucky in your timing because we've had several things come forward where there's people who are like scofflaws. They just, you know, they know they're, they know they ain't supposed to be doing what they're doing, and they do it anyway.
Yeah, I was, I'm trying to point out that we were in the process of trying to get everything fixed.
And, and recently, I think it was Home Depot and Lowe's had subcontractors that were telling people, "Yeah, oh yeah, we, you know, on your water heater, we pulled a permit and, and..."
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
"...it's like, really dangerous." So I just wanted to have that clear in my mind.
Yeah, it was a greenhouse contractor who had a lot of experience building greenhouses in the area.
Uh-huh.
So, that's, that's what he had explained.
Sounds like one of those things instead of...
And once one was done, we had trouble with the rest because we couldn't get the new ones permitted because we had these other ones that weren't. And then there were some retroactive engineering that we had to get done in order to get the permits, so...
Mm-hmm, and, and moving forward, um, as you, as you expand, uh, uh, these activities, then, then you'll have to do this, uh, hydrology report again?
Yes.
So...
Well, we know how to do it now, so...
Well, you have Mr. Nagy working for you, right?
Yes, that's right.
So you're in good hands?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your input there. Um, no other questions? No, no other speakers? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open it for deliberations and comments by the commission.
Well, I, I'd like to go ahead and move, uh, the recommended, recommended actions that, uh, that we certify the MND and make the, uh, findings, uh, one through five.
Second. Second side, Mr. Westner. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
No opposition. Okay, that concludes that matter. Um, report by the planning director, comments?
Good job, Michelle.
Yes, thank you, Chair Rodriguez. I would like to also say a nice job to, uh, Michelle. It was her first presentation before the planning commission, and I'd also like to congratulate her on her recent wedding. So, very good. Thank you so much, Michelle.
Thank you, good presentation.
On another piece of, of good news, I wanted to let you know that the Piru area plan, um, that your commission, uh, approved not too long ago, has won an award and, uh, an APA Award, American Planning Association Award from the Central Coast APA, and that will be presented, um, this Saturday night in Avila Beach. Um, let's see, a few other things that I wanted to talk to you about. Um, I am hoping our, our next time that we get together, right now, that looks like May fourteenth, um, we can have a study session. So I would like to, to ask if your, um, commission has ideas. We have some things that we would like to bring, bring to you and let you know what we're working on. We have, um, a couple of things that I've given to you. One of them is a grant-funded parking standards update, so we are working on our parking standard in our code. Um, we're also working on a landscape connectivity or landscape linkages in our ordinance. Um, the ongoing Get to Excellence Plan, um, a few of those items went live last month, the, uh, comprehensive application packet, the one-stop payment and one invoicing from the county, that's going to make it a lot nicer for the applicants. They come in, they play the counting department, uh, the planning department counter one fee, and then they get one bill from the county. So, so that's going to be a lot nicer for them. Um, and also, we have a development review committee that, uh, we now have for more complicated projects that can come in. We can gather all the county agency and give them all the advice at one time on a pre-submital review. So these are the, a few of the things that we're working on, the longer-term things that we're working on, um, by longer term, I mean hopefully wrapped up in the next six months or so, is the county's initial study assessment guidelines, new standard conditions, standard mitigation measures, and a standard way to, uh, conduct condition and compliance. Um, all of the county agencies that do discretionary permitting are also working on updating their policies and procedures, so, and now all of the county agencies are getting together, routinely, to discuss how we write conditions, how we enforce conditions, what mitigations are, what's the difference between a completeness and an incompleteness item. Um, we're really trying to get in front of these issues about why these permits take so long to process, why they remain incomplete for so long. Um, and when we did all of this research and looked at the metrics and, and all of the data that we had, it wasn't that we were slow in processing permits after they got complete, it was that we were having a very hard time getting applications complete. So now we do have a comprehensive application packet, um, and we're excited for a few projects to go through that, so then we can run our metrics again and see how we're doing. Um, but I have all confidence that this is going to be a much smoother, much easier system, once all of these get to excellence, um, items that we're working on get accomplished. So I'm excited to see where we're going to be in about a year from now, but, um, I do want to bring some of these things back to you in more detail and, and talk to you about that. Maybe at that time, we might even have a new, uh, commissioner. I know, um, Commissioner Bartels is leaving us, so, um, Supervisor Long is looking for another commissioner. Um, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about our training schedule and see if this is something that you were interested, if we email you. I know that the planning department has bi-weekly training, and we train on all sorts of discussion topics. We have a guest presenter every two weeks, and then we also have a planner of the day. Um, so planners tell us what they're working on and, um, the latest and greatest in their division, and that's, that's been really exciting. We've been doing this for about a year and a half. We also let the board, uh, members know and the board aides know, and they stop down and visit these, uh, every once in a while, too. They are, uh, in the multipurpose room. So I just wanted to let you know that, that we do ongoing training. If you're ever interested in a topic on that, you can call me and I'll let you know and confirm that it's still going on.
A question of county council on that, if you still have, there it is. Uh, if more than two of us show up to one of these trainings, do we have to notice or is that come under one of the exceptions?
It's an exception in the, in the sense that it is a training, uh, but that if there is a quorum of you attending any of these meetings, that you should refrain from any and all discussion with regards to, uh, activities before the planning commission. So, just be aware that if three of you are there, no discussion with regards to, uh, planning matters before you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so with that, um, I mean, we have some items and some ideas we'd like to bring back to you on the fourteenth, but is there anything, uh, as far as workshops or study session go, that you would like the planning department to bring back before you?
I realize it's, it's happened rather, rather soon, but I'd curious to know how that's, uh, that overall process is going and whether you're getting sort of a public comment back on, on the application process and, you know, the shortened timeline to get projects through. I'd also be curious about, to know, uh, about the code enforcement efforts that are going on and, you know, how those workload indicators are working out for you. It, my, although today's issue was obviously, uh, something that was cited back in '04, I'm curious to see what we're getting in the way of more current stuff.
The, and, and I do want to kind of talk to you a little bit about why you've seen so many enforcement cases lately, because I've asked for all the enforcement cases. We have a way of running these, uh, reports now, and you can see which land use cases are associated with violation cases, and in my opinion, those are things that need to be brought down here sooner rather than later. So we are making this correlation, having, um, looking at all of the hundreds of permits the county is processing and getting these violation cases done, wrapped up and back down to the planning commission. So you're seeing them, and you might see several more of them in the next few sessions until where we have that backlog cleaned up, but it's very important to me that we don't have violation cases linger. Um, let's see, what, do I have one other issue? So for the study session, oh, the, the code compliance, I do want to talk to you about that, too, because the condition, the code compliance has left the planning department and it's on its own department now. The code compliance department has its own deputy director under the, um, RMA Director, Chris Stevens. So it used to be in the planning department. It went before the board several months ago. Um, Jim Delperdang is now, he's the weights and measure, the county sealer. He is now the, um, manager or the, uh, the director of the code enforcement unit. So, um, Jim took all of the cases from the planning department, as well as all the cases from the building and safety department, and code compliance was then combined under RMA. So those members of my section, uh, also went, and the members of the building officials' section went to combine them into this, uh, one section. So, um, we, in the planning department, still maintain a condition compliance person, somebody that goes out every three years as the code mandates, if not sooner, to review all of the conditions of a permit, and we also have the permit, uh, SMAR, the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act Coordinator, who does mining, uh, enforcement. But the enforcement of the code violations has gone to a, to a different division. So I think that, uh, we can see how that is going, maybe in six months, and report back to you on that, but I think under, under one division where that's all they have to concentrate, I can see that. And, and with the implementation, implementation of the civil administrative penalties ordinance, that's also been very helpful in cleaning up old cases. And we are applying that, as you can see, um, in one of these bullet points, the notice of imposition of civil administrative penalties. We are also applying that towards conditional use permits as an interim step and try, if they don't comply, to have them comply with the daily administrative penalties, um, and have the final step in revoking the permit. We now have this interim step that we can use. So a lot of progress is being made right now that we want to report back to you in more detail on the fourteenth.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, any other comments?
Um, yeah, just if, if you're aware of any state bills, assembly or senate, um, that will affect future planning, um, whether they're actually voted upon or not, but just to give us a fl, and what I'm speaking to here, um, is specifically, I remember the last time we went through this difficult times in recession, that the state legislature ex, uh, extended the, um, the time for, uh, pulling permits and things like that, automatically overrode everything we did, uh, from one year to two year, I think I remember correctly. So if there's anything like of that nature that we'd have to be considerate of in the near future, as we review these things?
Was that in the nineties?
Yeah, yeah, between ninety-two and ninety-five, there's, everything just stopped. And we had, they had approved projects and it's like, couldn't move forward, so the legislature stepped in and just extended it two years.
Okay, uh, nothing else? Our, our next meeting then is probably May fourteenth?
May fourteenth is the next one we have right now, yes.
Okay, great. We're adjourned.